Good morning. This is New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October 7, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Continued hearing items. Item number one, 30201BZ, 2519 Creston Avenue, the Bronx.
Good morning, Chair Perlmutter, Commissioners. This is Dan Eggers of Greenberg Troward on behalf of the applicant. We were present at the review session yesterday, and we understand the board is pleased that the owner has committed to installing the new fence around the site and inquired as to the installation schedule. We expect it will take about two months to obtain the required permits from DOB. The fence would have to be ordered then, depending on if it's in stock at the time. That could take up to a month. Installation would only take about two weeks, but I'm told that the dead of winter is not a good time to do concrete work, so if we don't have the permits and the fence before January, installation would have to wait until March or April. However, if there are few mild weeks in January, February, installation could be done then.
Okay. Any questions about that? So definitely, there should be an effort for taking advantage of mild weeks. Hopefully, we won't have a winter like we had last. Okay. Any other questions? So, thank you. We really do appreciate the improved fence. So, for our motion to close on this?
Chair Perlmutter?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so we can have a decision date on the 21st of October?
Thanks.
Item number two, 15207BZ, 8701 Fourth Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Eric Palatnik.
Thank you, Eric. I don't know if we had any comments on this. So, we can close this and have a vote on October 21st?
Thank you.
So, for our motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases. Item number three, 82259BZ, 1774 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the board's questions. We have answers to a decent amount of the questions the board had, and also, we'd be happy to provide a written response that gives you everything in writing. If it pleases the board, I'll just go through what I heard yesterday, if that's to your At the outset, I wanted to let you know that there's a little bit of a ping, by the way, on the...
Yeah, call us.
Okay. The outset, I wanted to let you know that the proposed operator, I know that the board has great concerns about community character in this application, as well as the residential uses that line it on the left and on the right, behind it and to the right. The operator here is Bola Enterprises, which is a local New York city about to start a franchisee automotive service station operator that specializes in C-store type uses such as this and converting. They purchased a lot of the ExxonMobil sites out of the recent ExxonMobil bankruptcy. I'm sure you've seen around the city, a lot of the mobile sites are boarded up. They were sold off recently as part of their ceasing of business operations, and Bola, which is the operator here, purchased a lot of their sites. Their sites are fantastically beautiful for gas stations. They have marble etchings on their walls. Usually, they use a great motif on their design of their structures. They use a lot of landscaping, and it's well-maintained landscaping, and the building materials they use are very high-quality building materials. So, the fencing that you're seeing around the property here on the plan form, the landscaping you're seeing around the property, is really not doing it justice in the plan form that you're seeing. It really will even be much nicer when it's actually constructed. And for our next submission, we'd like to forward you photographs, I think would be helpful for the board of other facilities that they operate, to show you what I'm speaking about, so that can give the board a mindset as to the impact on the character of the neighborhood. But the specific questions that the board had, one, you asked if we have a drawing of the rear of the premises. We do. We gave you it in the drawing package. I believe it's a drawing Z600, a drawing of the rear of the property. We'd be happy to provide you with another drawing if the board would be... I think it's... Let me just double-check if it's in there. I guess it's in the architect. Yeah. Yeah. Z600, the building elevations plan sheet gives you at the bottom of it, the rear elevation of the building. That was one of the questions the board had, and we'd be happy to give you more information if you wanted it. You asked us to amend the plans to show all the trees fully around the perimeter of the site. That we'd be happy to do for the board. The sign calculation, the board had a question. What is correct, because it didn't match the drawings? The sign analysis is, in fact, correct, and we'll amend the drawings so that it reflects that, and we apologize that the architect made an error in that area. You asked about the condensers for the C-store. I think what you were asking about is where all the air conditioner is going to be, and they're going to be located on the roof of the building, as we show you in the roof plan.
Well, my question was, I understand that they're on the roof of the building, but my question was, you've got new condensers up there. There probably were already some HVAC units on the roof, but you're showing new condensers, especially because you've got a new big walk-in box. So, my question is, is that have you thought about the noise mitigation that you might have to do? I assume that this is, what is this, 24 hours?
It's 24 hours.
So, you're going to have, they're going to emit some noise for 24 hours a day. So, have you thought about how you're going to dampen that, especially for the residential areas?
Well, the parapet, there is a two-foot parapet that extends around the perimeter of the building that we thought would buffer the sound adequately, given the distance of the condensers, because we've tried to locate them in the center. You can see in the center of the building, near the dead center of the building, furthest away from the residential.
Can you give us some information on how that's actually going to happen? Having a two-foot parapet is fine, but you're talking theoretical, and I know that those things can make some noise. So, I'd like you to take a look at that and come back, maybe?
Sure. We'd be happy to.
Some real information.
And with respect to the rear facade, it was that the drawings don't show any kind of treatment of the rear facade?
She'd like to know how that, what materials it'll be.
Right, because it shows, you know, coins and moldings and so on on the front facade, but the rear seems to be a little dejected, so how is that going to be treated?
We'd be happy to. And that's what I was referring to earlier, as you see on the plans, as the front of the decorative accents that they try to add to a gas station. The facing of the rear facade, I think another question the board had was the widening of Victory Boulevard. I'm not aware of any proposal for a widening on Victory Boulevard at this location. I thought that was me.
There's something that was printed in the step-down paper.
Ah, in the advance. I know I should have a subscription to the advance.
That's why I brought it up.
Okay.
So, if you could take us what the plans are, because the only thing that's really in the widening line is the sign, tall sign.
That's the only thing that would have to be... We spoke with the engineer last evening, and it's the only thing that would have to be relocated. The site's been designed around the widening line, so that if the widening were to occur, it wouldn't impact the site.
So, you may need to have an alternate plan in case that does need to be changed.
Well, I think if there was a widening at that point, we'd probably come back to the board at that point with the widening, with the movement of the sign, and ask, hopefully, for an amendment by letter.
Oh, do you mind if we, like, just find out where they are and...
Yeah, yes, definitely. We'll update you for sure. We'll definitely update you for sure. By the way, Mr. Costanza, there's a ping on the microphone, just to let you know.
It's a reverberation.
I think the board had more questions also in relation to the curb cuts and their movement and relocation.
Well, I have a question about the curb cut on the northeast, which is one that's on Victory Boulevard, closest to Manor Road.
On Victory, because, yes.
That actually intersects the pedestrian crosswalk.
We'll just pull up the...
That's not very safe for pedestrians to move. You don't show some more concrete plans, but it is almost like it's on Manor Road.
We'll give you something back in writing with that. I'm just looking at the notes that the architect, the engineer, sent me last evening, saying that everything has been done to accommodate the utilities as well as the crosswalks, and it should be approved by Department of Transportation, they're telling me. So, with your permission, I'd like to bring that back to the engineer and get you some more clarification as to how they got to that conclusion.
The curb cuts have also changed since the last go-around with this site?
Yes.
So, you've got sort of like one really long curb cut as opposed to two. I think it's on Manor?
On Manor. We're proposing to eliminate one. There's two now on Manor.
So, can you...
Well, this, excuse me, I misspoke there. There is the very long one, which we're proposing to incredibly shorten, to reduce it to 30 feet.
So, you're going to shorten that one?
Yes. That Manor is being eliminated, well, not eliminated, but it's been cut in half.
Okay, because now it's one big, long...
Correct. That's being reduced, so it's going to be just 30 feet closest to the intersection of Manor and Victory.
Okay. That was not clear on the drawing.
But how does that work, then, with the one that's right in the crosswalk? I understand why you're shortening one of them, but why that one in the crosswalk? That's on...
I don't know. I want to clarify with the engineer of the crosswalk. When we spoke to the engineer, they indicated that it was satisfactory to Department of Transportation, and it was actually an existing curb cut, but they were not interfering with it other than making it slightly wider, but not enough to interfere with the intersection, according to DOT. So, I'll get you clarification on that.
I'm sure we can get you...
Yeah, we will.
Did you give us a circulation diagram for the site?
I don't know if we did.
Don't think so. So, perhaps you could put all of that information on a circulation diagram showing the pedestrian crosswalks and where you anticipate people, you know, getting onto the site, either by car or by foot, just to make sure that we're not doing, you know, doing something that would be harmful.
We'd be happy to.
And also, I had a question about the storage area on the site. If most of the store is going to be, most of the interior of the building is devoted to the convenience store, where are they going to be storing supplies for the automotive use?
There are no, there's really no automotive use occurring on the site anymore.
Or any kind of gas, I mean, you're operating a business, isn't there, that has to do with delivering gas, right? It's not just a service station. I mean, it's not just a convenience store.
Right, but there's nothing necessary on-site, other than the cash register for that, and, of course, the apparatus related to the pump, the multiple pump dispensers and tank equipment and so forth and so on. All of that is serviced by an outside company, so there's nothing, really nothing should be left on-site. I know in the next application we have, you see some remnants around, and I'll explain that, but for the most part, it's this exterior, third-party company that comes in and services either. It's called Alvin Petroleum is one, or Tyree. You probably see their trucks around the city from time to time, and that's who takes care of, maintains those, that equipment.
Here's something. Jason's Manor Road in the southeast corner of the site, in front of the two parking spaces, I don't know, it's a platform area, or a structure they have on the side of the corner, or if there's an above-ground tank there.
We'll just get to the site plan, will we? I'm sorry, where are you on the site plan?
Jason's Manor Road, adjacent to the convenience store, in front of the two parking spaces. What is that? Is that a structure? Is that...
Are you talking about the... No, there's no platform there. I think he's just dimensioning. The architect is just doing a poorly job of dimensioning his drawing there, and he's carrying the line over here, the two parking spaces that are perpendicular, that are parallel with the building. That's what you're speaking about, and then...
Right. Well, could that area be landscaped? Or what's there?
Oh, you're talking about what's behind, that's the area where it says existing fence to be relocated?
Yes.
In that portion there?
Because it looks almost like a mold structure, but it's not really defined in terms of what's there. So, if you could just clarify?
Yeah, I will find out for you. I'm looking at the photos, just trying to...
And I was wondering if you could...
Yeah, there's nothing there now on the photos, so I don't know what he's proposing there, but we'll put something in there and indicate what it is.
Okay. And then I have one other comment that you added, an air tank and a vacuum machine ...
Yes, we're...
...adjacent to the home, which is, it's almost like two feet away from the home on Victory Boulevard.
Perhaps we'll relocate that away from the home.
Okay. And I wrote down the previous...
We'd be happy to address that.
There's no sound buffering or anything there, it's just light.
Now, we'll include, we'll put relocated away from the homes, and if we do relocate it, we'll include fencing around it.
Anything else on this?
Did you reconcile some signage?
Oh, he said that he was going to correct the plan, that they do comply, apparently, but the...
Right, the plans were incorrect, but the zoning analysis was...
Correct, on the signage.
Okay.
Okay. So, how much time do you need to do this?
We could submit back to the board within two weeks.
Two weeks. So, submit on the, okay, I think we can, submit on the 21st, or, sorry, submit on the 28th, maybe, and next hearing on the 11th? Is that okay? I'm sorry, next hearing on the 18th?
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you.
Item number four, calendar number 96487BZ, 786 Burke Avenue, the Bronx. Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again. Trying to maintain gas stations in New York City. This one is in a similar story to the application I had before you, where there's a new operator coming in, Getty Petroleum. I'm sure you may or you may not be aware of, filed for bankruptcy approximately three years ago, two and a half years ago, and in doing so, their sites, while they were in the route to bankruptcy, their sites deteriorated tremendously in both the quality of their maintenance, as well as the quality of their operators. This site still has operating it, an operator that was maintained from the bank, the pre-bankruptcy days, which we're now trying to remove from the site, which is why the site is in the condition it is. They expect it to be out of there shortly, at which point the maintenance will be taken over by the applicant here. And the applicant here has purchased the sites out of bankruptcy and is intending to redevelop the site, clean it up from its current condition, it has not been well-maintained, neither in the pictures that you've been presented with, nor in its condition up until now. The back of the property, the parking area is, is tattered at best. There's weeds, there are trucks irregularly parked back there. I saw the equipment that you were speaking of in, like, the earlier application where I told you, the equipment is not usually stored on-site, and it is not, you know, it's not the common practice within the automotive service station business to dismantle pumps and keep the pumps on the property, or keep any spare equipment for the pumps on the property, so that should not be there. But we are proposing an entire redevelopment to the site with a new operator. The C-store, the convenience store component, will take up a small portion, approximately 663 square feet of the building. Will still maintain a couple of service bays so that there can be auto repairs conducted at the site, and that is the application, essentially. We heard a lot of the board's questions, I think, which pertained really, a lot of them to the current condition of the site, and hopefully, if I can garner enough control or have my client garner enough control over the site to clean that up before the next hearing, I will. I don't know if that's under his control or not to gain access to the site, and I'll find out, and if it can be, we'll have that attended to before the next hearing.
Okay. So, with respect to this operator, can you also provide some history on their track record?
On the proposed operator, the current operator, yes, we certainly can. It's a much different organization.
And maybe show us some images of other sites they operate?
We'd be happy to.
Any other comments on this one? How much time do you need to submit?
We could submit back within about two weeks.
Two weeks. So, let's do the same. So, submission on the, the submission on the 28th and hearing on the November 18th?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any speakers on this item?
Item number five, calendar number 29392BZ, 70-20 Austin Street, Queens, Jeffrey Chester.
This is an application to reestablish a special permit for physical culture establishment. I was at the executive session yesterday, and I heard some of the comments, and I think I can address some of them. One is, I was told that just as of yesterday, the fire system throughout the building, the entire building is now connected to the fire department, so I'm not quite sure what you want to see in terms of proof of that or a letter to that effect, but I was told that was just, there are other tenants in the building, there are medical offices, there are other retail tenants in the building as well. So, it's a building-wide system.
So, you can change the note on the drawing?
The note will be changed.
Yes, okay. And what about the violation for operation without a public assembly permit?
Well, as you know, any space where you have occupancy over 75 requires a public assembly permit.
Right.
At this point in time, there were other issues that prevented us from renewing the CO, which prevented us from renewing the PA, and none of that can happen until, at this point, until the board reestablishes the special permit for the physical culture establishment.
Okay, but you've already applied for the PA, and then you got an objection?
I believe that's accurate.
Can you give us a copy of the application for the PA and the objections?
Yes.
So, we know that this happened. There were some other questions about the accessibility, whether the handicap toilets were installed, and about the signage calculations in a C2.
Well, yeah, we did, we did make the site completely ADA compliant, as far as I'm aware, a number of years back, and there's a ramp, and I believe there's an ADA accessible restroom. Concerning the C22, this Forest Hills area went through a rezoning in 2009. It was a Forest Hills special sub-district, and what was C82 was rezoned to R5 with a, I'm sorry, what was C, yeah, what was C8 was rezoned to R5 with C2 overlay. So, those signs have been up for many, many years. They were put up under the C8 regulations.
It's almost slightly over, so...
It's only slightly over?
It's like 185, instead of 100.
Maybe in your papers, you could explain that, that they're non-conforming signs, but they were installed pursuant to permits, right?
Correct.
Can you also...
Yep.
...provide us with permits to show that they're non-conforming, just sort of establish there that they are grandfathered non-conforming signs pursuant to permits? Okay. Anybody else on this? Okay. How much time do you need to just give us that material?
Make changes to the plans, et cetera. A few weeks, three weeks.
Okay, great. So, if you could submit on the 28th of October, or hearing on the 18th of November?
Great. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Are there any speakers on this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, calendar number 15907BZ, 240286 Street, Brooklyn. Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Yeah, I don't think we had any issues particularly that we were waiting for, right? They did, Commissioner...
In your statement, you said that the owners working on violations, which are, you have six open DOB and seven open Egress violations?
Right.
So, some of the violations had to do with Egress?
But there was one in 2005, and that's been corrected.
The statement that you said that they're working on violations, to me, is not satisfactory.
Okay.
So, I'd like to give photos of all the Egresses...
We'd be happy to.
...that were blocked. And I looked on the Department of Building site, and it appears there was an application by sprinklers and the fire alarm system.
Okay.
In 2014, and the plans were different.
Probably waiting on this action.
Perhaps, but is there a fire alarm system or are there sprinklers?
We'll update you on that.
But is there a sprinkler panel, you have sprinklers at the top of each Egress there, and there's four of them? So, those were only prior to plans from, what is it, 2007?
We'll get confirmation for you that those are in place, that the fire alarms in place, and the Egress, it hasn't occurred since. That violation was in 2005, nine years ago, and it hasn't been reissued since, and I know that you would want assurances of that, so we'll get you photographs to show you that.
And also, the elevator has some violations, but, boy, I see the out...
Yeah, that's just a routine.
The thing is, is that it always serves PCUs, so...
This portion does, yes, this, the second floor.
Right. So, it is responsible?
Well, the building owner is responsible for the elevator, it's a part of the lease agreement, but it's just, that's just a routine, you know, unfortunately.
Can you check to see if it's been inspected and that they're updated on their inspections?
We will.
Ask the owner to get in touch with the elevator maintenance company and just see that that's been kept up?
We'd be happy to.
Because you should have that removed, have the violation removed.
I think the thinking was that after, once we got the CFO issues in order, that they were going to go back and clean house on all the violations.
You might not get your CO issues in order unless you've cleared the elevator violation. It's the only elevator that services the space.
So, we'll find out and give you an update.
Okay. So, can we then, I think we can close this, and you just submit the...
We'd be happy to.
Right. Okay, so, oh, are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so, we can close and submit the materials and decision on the 28th, submit the materials on the 21st, a decision on the 28th?
We'd be happy to. It'll be fine.
So, for our motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, decision item, item number seven, calendar number 1912A, 38-30, 28 Street, Queen, the law office of Marvin B. Mitzner.
Good morning. Ashley Hall, Naval Office of Marvin B. Mitzner, for the applicant.
Good morning. For our motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases. Item number eight, calendar number 10614A, 84 William Street, Manhattan, Greenberg Troward.
Morning, Chair Perlmutter, Commissioners. My name is Jay Siegel. I'm with Greenberg Troward, and I represent the applicant. The board raised four questions at its review session yesterday that I'd like to address. Is that you asked for an explanation between the inner court regulations for a residential building and for a hotel building. The zoning resolution provides that legal light and air can be provided for a residential building from an inner court that has a minimum dimension of 30 feet and a minimum size of 1,200 square feet. However, where a building is able to be converted pursuant to Article 1, Chapter 5 of the zoning resolution, which in Manhattan, the community boards 1 through 6, and the building has to be built before 1961, except in Lower Manhattan, it could have been built before 1977. And if a building qualifies for that based upon its age, it does not have to have an inner court meeting the standards I just described. Instead, the light and air standards for such a court is provided in the multiple dwelling law. The applicable provision of the multiple dwelling law in Section 277 provides for a much more relaxed and smaller inner court. It needs to only have a distance of 15 feet perpendicular to a window and 100 square feet total, very small. Thus, this building at 84 William converted to a use group to residential in 2001, and its court, which is 930 square feet, and its distance, which is 20 some-odd... its court, which is 930 square feet, and its distance, which is 20 some odd feet, a little bit over 20 feet perpendicular from windows to building walls or lot line boundaries, is well above the 100 square feet and the 15-foot dimensional requirements that is set forth in Section 277. Hotels, on the other hand, there is no provision in the zoning resolution providing dimensional requirements for inner courts, because inner courts are not specified as providing light and air for hotel rooms. Instead, the controlling statute is the multiple dwelling law. But the provisions of the multiple dwelling law concerning inner courts, other than the special 277, provide that you need 30 feet perpendicular from a window to a wall or an outer boundary of a zoning lot and 1,200 square feet. So, 84 William, having successfully converted to residential in 2001, could not convert to a hotel, because it doesn't meet those requirements. The court is only 930 feet, and although there's an adjacent court of 550 feet, and collectively they're more than 1,200 feet, this court doesn't count. And although it's got 20 feet from the windows to a wall and a lot line, it's not 30 feet, which is somewhat odd, because if the 20 feet had been in the rear yard, it would be an adequate distance and provide legal light and air, because you can get legal light and air from a hotel that has a rear yard of 30 feet, but because of the way the statutes work together, not, that has a court of a distance of 20 feet.
Great.
So, are there any questions about this point? Okay. The next question was about ventilation. The current ventilation under the residential conversion is there is natural ventilation from the court for the living rooms. The bathrooms and the outside corridors have mechanical ventilation. The proposed hotel conversion will keep the system but also add mechanical ventilation for all of the hotel rooms. And the ventilation will be provided by the HVA systems on the roof of the building, one on the roof of the 19-story addition, and one on the roof of the 17-story addition. The one in the 17-story addition, the 19-story addition just has the core on the two additional floors over here, so the HVA system won't be near any units. Are there any questions about this? Okay. The third question was about the emergency generator on the second floor of the court. Yes, there is such a generator that will operate in emergency conditions. It will be taking air from the court and will be emitting hotter air into the court, but the exhaust from the generator will be from a flue on the roof of the 19th story.
So, the skylights that are on, on, I guess, the third floor level, or the roof of the second floor, right above the generator, they're operable. So, I'm just wondering, is that some sort of additional ventilation for that generator that is not, you know, sort of mechanically drawn up through a flue that goes all the way to the ninth floor? So, I'm just, I'm asking if you're venting at all into that courtyard?
The only vents will be hot air that comes out of the generator when it's operating. Warm air, I don't know how hot it'll be, but there will be no exhaust. The exhaust comes from a flue that's over here in the 19th story. So, all the fumes that come out of the generator, it's an oil-fired generator, and all the fumes that come out will come from the top, there will be some air emitted.
But at the 19th? No, I thought...
The air that's emitted will be on the second floor. The fumes will be on the 19th floor.
Okay. Okay, so it's hot air at the second floor?
Hot air will come out in the courtyard.
Okay. But this is only in the event of the use of the emergency?
Only when it's used, yeah, in emergency conditions, when the Con Ed power fails and they need something to operate the elevators.
Okay.
And the last question we had were the number of living rooms that would be affected by this, and there are... There are five per floor and a total of 15 floors, and these are the five. Now, just note that this hotel room has three windows, so while each of the windows is below 30 feet, there are a lot of windows. And this one has two windows, and this room has four windows, this one two, and this one one, although it also has light and air from the balcony coming through, at least an air coming, or at least light coming from the balcony doors. So, the rooms, most of them, although the windows are 10 feet less than the 30 feet required, but the same distance as a rear yard would require, is, most of the rooms will be multiple windows.
Sorry, what do you mean, they're 10 foot less than the 30 foot required? It's a 10 percent, you're talking about a 10 percent window opening?
No, no, not about the windows. I was referring to the 30-foot minimum dimensional requirement that the MDO requires.
Perpendicular to the window you're talking about?
Yeah, the windows, yes.
But you're just saying there are a lot of windows in each room?
Lot of windows. In addition to being adequate size for what a rear yard would have been and having a fairly large court, it's that in most of the cases, there's more than one window. I think those were the questions the Board raised yesterday.
Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this item? So, if you could just amend your statement of facts to tell the story about the multiple dwelling law and these other conditions, that would be great.
Okay.
So, I think we can close this, and just the date. So, if you could submit on the 21st and the decision on the 28th?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. So, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases, item number eight, calendar number 10614A, 84 William Street, Manhattan, Greenberg Charter?
No. Doing Fulton Street.
Fulton Street.
Fulton Street. What happened?
Which one?
14214A, number nine.
What did I say? Sorry, item number nine, calendar number 14214A, 92 Fulton Street, Manhattan, Goldman Harris.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Howard Goldman, representing the applicant. We attended the review session yesterday, so I just wanted to confirm that letters of no objection have been submitted by the fire department dated July 1st, the DEP dated July 29th, and DOT dated July 31st, and these were submitted directly to the Board by those agencies. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I just wanted to thank you for that very thorough history of the mapping of Fulton Street. I actually learned a lot.
So did we.
Are there any comments, questions on this? Okay, are there any speakers on this item? So, we can close this and...
Just, Madam Chair, I emailed you, need a slight correction on the plan. I had emailed Elizabeth about it.
Okay.
Just a little note, that's all you need.
Okay, we'll get that in ASAP.
Okay, so you will get that out by the 21st of October?
I think we'll get that out by the 8th of October.
Okay, that's good. So, and we can schedule a decision on the 28th of October. So, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number 10, calendar number 312BZ, 36 West 93rd Street, Manhattan, Davidoff, Hutcherson, Citron.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair Commissioners, Howard Weiss, Davidoff, Hutcherson, Citron.
As I noted yesterday at the review session, we are going to briefly reopen this case to accept your latest submission of October 2nd, and then we will not be taking any additional testimony. So, I have a motion to reopen.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
We accept your submission?
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, calendar number 13014BZ, 605 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan, Francis R. Angelino?
No. Mr. Case, sorry. You don't have the updated lineup. 50, sorry. Hold it. He said...
All right, sorry.
Item number 11, back. Back. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, no, you're... Sorry, item number 11, 50-14, 825 Manhattan Avenue, Brooklyn, sorry.
Somebody once said, "You're not trying if you're not making mistakes," so it's okay.
Okay, so similarly, we need to reopen this to receive the Landmarks Commission certificate of no effect, and then we'll close this and vote. So, for a motion to reopen the hearing?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
And then for a motion, so we accept your submission of the LPC certificate of no effect?
Thank you.
And then for a motion to close?
Sorry, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And then for a motion to readopt the resolution that was issued on September 16?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 13014BZ, 605 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan, Francis Angelino?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. For a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 13, 20614BZ through 21214BZ, Lunark, West 12th Street, 119 East 7th Street Road, 592 Beach 43rd Street, 6952 Thursby Avenue, 3-41 Beach 87th Street, and 209A Beach 100th Street. I understand that 20814 will be deferred, we will only be granting the other numbers, 206, 7, 8, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, so, for a motion to grant, as described, excluding...
Sorry, it's my understanding that 119 East 7th Road is deferred?
That's deferred, and that's number 208, correct?
Yes, okay.
2081?
208.
14?
So, for a motion to grant all but calendar number 208-14 at 119 East 7th Road, yeah, for motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
And so, we can defer on 208-14? I understand they need about eight weeks, so should we schedule it or we just leave it as a deferral?
Schedule it.
Schedule it.
Okay, we saw.
So, if they could submit, you think, if they could submit on the 25th of November, is that enough time?
I'll check and get back to you.
Okay, how about we make it December 9th? That should be enough time for you. That's more than eight weeks.
Submission due?
Okay, December 9th for the submission, and December 16th for the next year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 14, 350-12BZ, 5-32nd Street, Brooklyn.
This matter was adjourned, I understand, yeah.
Good morning, Rachel LaBelle, Shell LaBelle, PC for the applicants. As commented on by the Chair, the applicant discussed this with staff and were informed that Department of Buildings actually was not going to submit in this regard. They would, in essence, prefer for us to make a submission directly to them with the plan so that they can consider the legal issues surrounding the argument of federal preemption. And so, we discussed this with counsel, and we're ready to submit to them and essentially get an adjournment from BSA during the pendency of that consideration.
Do you want us to schedule you, or do you want us to hold off on that until you heard from DOB?
I think probably at this point, it would be beneficial to be scheduled for something maybe in three months, and so hopefully during that time, Department of Buildings would make their determination, or two to three months if DOB is able to do that earlier.
So, when you say two to three, does that mean December or does that mean January?
I think it means December.
Okay, so we could adjourn until, for submission on the 2nd of December and hearing on the 16th?
That's great. Thank you. And to the extent that DOB has not come to a decision at that point, we would just inform the Board of their step in the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 18513BZ, 97 Franklin Avenue, Brooklyn. Mr. Flutten, 97 Franklin.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We're in the middle of working with Department of Environmental Protection to finish up the testing at the site, so asking for approximately four more weeks to stay on your calendar, and hopefully we'll have our sign-offs from DEP by then.
And there were some other issues to resolve, though, on this, right?
Yeah, you had submitted the HASP to DEP, and so...
Correct.
You're just waiting for them to get back to you?
Correct.
And you need the two months?
Correct.
So, you're looking... I don't have any...
No, but in addition to that, weren't there issues about the exterior stair, the rear, this one?
I believe we had addressed it. We removed the stair, and then we submitted a memorandum relating to the use of the cellar level.
Okay. And DOB had opined, I guess, on whether or not you were okay with the cellar depression in the cell?
Yes, yes.
That you hadn't exceeded your square footage?
Correct.
So...
I just, yeah, I guess, I had a question, because it's such an odd plan, like way up there in the odd plan department. There's a vestibule at the first floor that connects to the second floor and carries you from the second floor through the vestibule down into the cellar.
Correct.
What's that about?
There's a resident living on the first floor, and there'll be the family that owns the building, living on the second floor, and the family that owns the building has access to the cellar level.
Oh, I see.
So, for the storage and whatnot.
Okay. Could you just tell the architect on sheet A2, they're saying that the balconies are on the third floor floors, and the mirror, the bathroom is the second floor.
I'll have that fixed.
Okay. So, you need about four weeks, is it?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So, if you could submit on the 18th of November for a hearing on December 9th?
Thank you.
Can you repeat that again, I'm sorry?
18th of November submission, hearing on December 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, are there any speakers on this item? Sorry about that.
Item number 16, 19313BZ, 4770 White Plains Road, DeBronz.
Eric Palatnik again, although this time I have a little more to say than our submission made, just requesting the adjournment. I just wanted to update the Board on what's occurring, and we're going to be speaking with your counsel. We've engaged them in a conversation already, and I believe they've had some conversations with the Department of Buildings. This is an application for a special permit to reduce the required parking, just to bring Madam Chair up to speed on it. And a portion of the building was developed in the 1920s as a UPS or some type of shipping facility, and then in the '30s was turned into a telephone exchange building, where it's operated on its current tax lot and zoning lot since the 1930s. In the '70s, the Board issued a special permit approval to enlarge that telephone exchange building, and the building rests within a C2, and the rear portion's within an R6. When we entered hearings here at the Board, your predecessor, Madam Chairwoman Shereen Vassen, and her colleagues on the Board at the time, most of which are still here, raised Vassen, and her colleagues on the board at the time, most of which are still here, raised concerns, as they will recall, with respect to the usage, the continued usage of the residentially zoned portion of the zoning lot for the use for parking, despite the fact that it's been reflected on the zoning lot for the past 100 years, and despite the fact that it's been incorporated in previous cases. So they asked us to bring it to the Department of Buildings for reconsideration, to get their affirmation that the use of the rear for parking, commercial parking, is permitted to continue to occur. We brought it to the Department of Buildings, and the Department of Buildings came back recently and issued a reconsider, issued a, an email back saying that they can't act on the reconsideration because there's a previous board action on the application. So it's left us in almost a bit of a conundrum as to which way to proceed. I tried to point out to the Department of Buildings that the previous board action is irrelevant only, is only relevant in the sense that it granted the enlargement of the previous telephone exchange building, but it was not subject, it did not grant any specific rights to the use of the entire property, commercial or residential. It was a special permit that was specific to telephone exchange buildings, so therefore the existence of a previous board matter is really irrelevant to the analysis, and wasn't a variance originally granted. There seems to be some confusion at Department of Buildings level. So your attorneys have been very gracious, this issue just came back from Department of Buildings a few weeks ago, a few days ago, and they've scheduled some time to sit with us and speak with us about it, but I wanted to let the board know what was going on with that. And simultaneously, which will of course update the board in writing on all of this, so you don't need to take too many notes, we submitted a secondary consideration to the Department of Buildings at the time, because we realized that the Department of Buildings was taking the parking calculations based upon the entire building itself, and the building, as I indicated earlier, was pre-1961, most of the building, just the exception of an enlargement that occurred in '73, subject to the board's approval for telephone exchange buildings. So we made the argument to Department of Buildings that the parking calculations, which is the whole reason we're here at the board, is to reduce the required parking, that's how this all started, should only be based on the post-1961 enlarged portion of the building, and that the pre-61 would not be required to have any parking, because it's pre-61. The Department of Buildings issued us a response to that reconsideration, saying that it's too premature to bring that to them, and we should bring it to them on plan review. Now, of course, that dunks us up once again, because we're at the board now on parking, and we wanted to have the discussion on parking, so we were hoping to get more clarity than we've received. The whole reason we've adjourned this, and it's been adjourned for four or five months already, is that we could prepare these reconsiderations, submit them to the Department of Buildings. As you know, it takes some time to get our responses from Department of Buildings. We finally got them back, and sort of leaves us in this twilight zone sort of area, which I'm sure we'll work through and find a solution to, and your attorneys have been great, and we'll find some time to get with them and work it through more. But I wanted to let the board know and put into the record what's occurring, so it didn't just appear as if we're constantly adjouring this, adjourning this matter, not prosecuting it.
Thank you.
It's a mouthful, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so how much, you want to set it?
Uh, yeah, if we could potentially, to stay current on your calendar, maybe just come back in four weeks, that should give us time to speak with your staff, and then hopefully have some more communications with Department of Buildings.
Okay, so, and that means you would be submitting your explanation prior to coming back in four weeks?
Uh, so actually then, if we could submit within four weeks, and then have a hearing after that, that would be great.
Okay, so then, uh, submission on November 4th, is that okay?
That's great.
And a hearing on November 18th?
Thank you very much.
Item number 17, calendar number 27113BZ, 129 North Fork Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, Eric Palatnik. Grabbed the wrong half of papers, excuse me for one sec. I apologize. I was quick, sorry about that. Eric Palatnik again, thank you for allotting me the time on the calendar this morning. We attended your review session yesterday, and if I heard correctly, Commissioner Hinkson raised the question as to the second floor.
Well, I raised, uh, the question about your four-foot-three-inch side yard. You're moving that entire wall.
No, we're not, we're not--
Your original wall is seven inches from the property line.
We're moving just a portion, just that small portion that's the protrusion is what we're moving, and if I just get out my plans here. We submitted, I'm sure you've had the opportunity to review Mr. Mealy's communication to the board dated September 12.
I did, and he, he explained more than he actually showed me. So it would be helpful if, on a plan, you could tell me where your existing wall is now, the foundation wall and the wall above, um, on the first floor, then show me where he's pulling back that side of the building. He's currently seven inches, he's got a first-floor wall that's seven inches from his property line. He's then showing me a new plan for a wall that's four-foot-three inches from that property line.
Which sits right on top of the existing wall that's running the remainder. The portion that's seven inches is only that one little black dot, well, not little, but the relatively small protrusion, right here. The rest of the wall is staying, this, and we're just proposing to build right on top of that. There's no change in that, in the remainder of this wall, that's why, and we don't mean to fight with the board or to resist your commentary, but we're not moving that, that first floor.
It's just not clear that that's, that he's dimensioned four-foot-three on his original plan. He doesn't really say that. He just shows me that he's got, um, sort of this protrusion, so, and it wasn't clear when--
Maybe we could clarify, work with him to get the plans a little bit clearer, show to your examiner?
And is that protrusion legal?
No, the protrusion, the protrusion is coming out. It's being removed.
Right, so he's--
That protrusion's being removed, and--
So what does he have that's remaining that's four-foot-three from his property line? If he's removing the very thing that he says that he needs to keep to have--
No, 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 that's not, no, 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 we're basing the four-foot-three on the remainder of the wall. The remainder of the existing wall is four-foot-three, that's what we're basing it on, we're basing it on that. We're removing this protrusion, it's, we're calling it out on our plans as being illegal. So we acknowledge that it's illegal, we acknowledge that the seven-inch yard is not proper. We're pulling that back to the existing wall, which rests at four-foot-three inches, and then we're doing a vertical enlargement right on top of that existing wall.
Okay, then maybe what he can do on his, um, on his current, on the plan that currently shows what's there, so his existing condition, he should call out that he's got a four-foot-three inch wall.
I think that's, yes, I think that would help, I was going through it again this morning--
He doesn't say that.
And I spent some time, and I saw that, I saw, and it's confusing because of that.
So the issue is that if, if indeed he's keeping that, you know, that line, he needs to show--
I understand, and so clearly, that's--
The wall is at four-foot-three.
I understand.
Right?
I understand what you're looking for.
Otherwise, it looks like he is taking out the entire wall and just pulling--
No, I understand where the confusion is now, I didn't, I did not until right now, but I did know. Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
I have a question too, unless there's some jog that I can't see on the lot area, the lot size. There's this jog in the wall, and, but meanwhile, it's dimensioned as four-foot-three from, say, closer to Norfolk, and four-foot-three from the rear yard side, the side lot line. But there's a jog in the wall. Why would there be a jog if the side yard is the same? Can you look on?
I think it jogs by about three, if I'm looking at the first floor plan, it shows it very clearly, it dimensions everything very clearly, and it's about a three-inch jog between the walls at that period, between the left side--
Why is there a jog? It's dimensioned as a side yard of four-foot-three from the front?
It just might be slopp, it just might be a little bit of sloppiness in the architect's drawings, and not actually accurately reflecting that, the slight discrepancy in the change as one moves along the wall from north to south. But it does appear to have changed by about three inches.
When you say it's a sloppiness, is it a sloppiness of dimensioning, or?
Yes, a sloppiness of dimensioning, I think that there's--
So it's actually four-foot-six in one place--
I think it's definitely not four-foot-three the whole way, judging from what I'm, what you're picking up on, and from what I'm seeing, it's a difference of an inch or two, or three, as one moves along the, you know, the 40-foot distance, or 66-foot distance of the home that we're talking about there. So it's definitely, there is a change, and it looks like it's right at that, that point that's showing on the plot plan. But I'll have the architect, I think, clarify that whole side, I think it would make it easier for the board if all the dimensions there were clear.
I think he's got to clarify all of his dimensions and be very clear.
We will.
So what his existing condition is, where all of his, where the foundation is, where the walls at the first floor are, on, on both sides, let's just make, let's just clean up the entire--
I understand, I understand what you're asking for, and I think I'll make it clear--
And then clearly show why he can build his, not only rebuild the first floor there, but then his second floor, where he wants to build that, and make it very clear as to how he can do that with his existing foundation and existing first-floor walls.
Understood.
It is totally unclear to me.
We'll make it clear.
Good.
Yeah. Kind of mysterious. Okay, um, so are there any speakers on this item? Okay, uh, how much time do you need to make these?
We can submit very quickly, in the next week or two, it's just a matter of having the architect revise that plan sheet.
Okay, so, um, submission on the 28th and hearing on the 18th of November?
Thank you.
Item number 18, 14414BZ, 1751 Park Avenue, Manhattan.
Rachel LaBelle, Shell LaBelle PC for the applicant.
Okay, all right, so this one, uh, very, we very much appreciate that you have made this effort with the owner and the school to provide these separate entrances, and the, because that way we really feel the children will be separated from the adults, that's terrific. And the only thing that we asked at review session was calculations by the architect to indicate that the lobbies would be sufficient in size to handle fire egress, because there is one stair that will be egressing arguably 50% of everyone in the building, and the lobby needs to be able to handle that kind of brush-on.
Sure.
So, but other than that, I think, um--
And we did make a submission, it may have just been yesterday, at the request of staff with regards to the lobby egress issue.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and Stephanie Hutchermeyer, the project architect, is available to discuss that briefly, if the chair wants to.
She's here?
Sure.
Okay, yes, please.
Stephanie Hutchermeyer, um, so after calculations, we've determined that the occupancy load for the building is a total of 304 persons, and there are two remote egresses outside of the building, so the Bailey House lobby will be one of those. Assuming that half of the occupants, or 152 persons, will be exiting through the Bailey House lobby, we will be required to have two units of width at 22 inches per unit of width. That is 44 inches total, and we are providing 93 and a half inches total at the most narrow location in the Bailey House lobby, so it complies.
Okay, thank you very much, and that was submitted, that information, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't see it yet.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Okay, so, at your request, and we understand the urgency of this for the school, we'll take a motion to close, and we'll also take a motion on a vote, okay? So for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Otley Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so, and for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, and Chair, thanks again for the expedited hearing schedule, as well as the understanding of the needs in the school, and the Children's Learning Center is very appreciative.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 19, 11714BZ, 101 West 91st Street, 121 and 139 West 91st Street, and 114 to 124 West 96th Street, 92nd Street, I'm sorry, Manhattan, the Trinity School.
Good morning, my name is Elise Wagner, I'm from Kramer Levin, Naftalison, Frankel, and I'm representing the Trinity School. I'm joined by John Allman, who's the head of Trinity School, and Marta Sanders, the school's architect from Rogers Partners, who's setting up our PowerPoint, as well as a number of other administrators, parents, and trustees. We're here today to discuss the school's application for a variance, which, which is to build a two-story addition to its existing facilities. The addition will allow the school to satisfy its programmatic needs for academic space, including labs, science labs, classrooms, and physical education space. Because the school is an educational institution, its programmatic needs are the centerpiece of this application for a variance. Today, we'll explain to the board how the proposed addition satisfies those needs, while an addition that would be permitted by the zoning would not satisfy those needs. And as soon as we get the PowerPoint going, oh, great, perfect. Okay, let's go to the next page, thanks, Daniel. This photograph shows the Trinity School in the context of the neighborhood. We're looking at the block between 91st and 92nd Street, Columbus and Amsterdam Avenues, and you'll see the property out, the area outlined in red is the zoning lot that's the subject of the variance, where, where the main Trinity facilities are, as well as Trinity House, the residential building. The blue area to the west are properties also owned by Trinity, the lower school and two townhouses, those are a separate zoning lot and are not part of this application. Here is the zoning of the properties, the, the eastern zoning lot that is the subject of the variance is located in two zoning districts, R72, and the eastern portion in the C19 district. The eastern 150 feet of the property is subject to a large-scale residential development special permit adopted in the 1960s in connection with the West Side Urban Renewal Area. This variance application does not affect that special permit, so no approval of the City Planning Commission is required. I would also note that the urban renewal plan has expired. Now I'm going to ask John Allman, Trinity's head of school, to provide a brief overview about the school and its programmatic need for the proposed addition.
Thank you. Founded in 1709 as a charity school in the shadow of Trinity Church Wall Street, Trinity School has a long and lively history in our city and on the Upper West Side. The school has been at its current location on West 91st Street since 1895, and currently over 2,000 members of the Trinity School community, students, parents, alumni, faculty and staff, live in the Community Board 7 district. Our school offers a comprehensive college preparatory education to nearly 1,000 boys and girls in kindergarten through 12th grade. Our school community is diverse, 39% of our student body are students of color, 24% of our students are students of, are faculty or faculty of color, and 25% of our upper school students receive need-blind financial aid. The school employs 162 full-time and part-time faculty, and has a total staff of 241. The school's mission explicitly calls us to educate, quote, "courageous citizens," and we strive to do so in part by serving as a good institutional citizen in our neighborhood, partnering actively with our neighbors and with numerous neighborhood organizations and institutions. Through extensive master planning processes in 2005 and 2006, and in 2010, 2011, it has become clear that the school's current instructional spaces are not adequate to meet the needs of our students and faculty. For over a decade, we have been confronting the reality that a 19th-century physical plant is inhibiting our ability to offer our students an education attuned to 21st-century educational needs. The school's current space deficiencies include the following: we suffer from too little instructional in space. For example, we have to teach lower school reading groups in our hallways because we don't have classroom space to do it in classrooms. Because our high school classrooms are 96% occupied, we are unable to add any new courses to our high school curriculum, stifling curricular innovation among our faculty. And we are unable to offer strong science students the opportunity to intensify their study of science by taking more than one science course prior to their final year of high school. Because the school has grown slowly over many years, its different program areas are spread over its four main buildings in an unplanned and haphazard way. As a result, instructional spaces are not arranged for sharing of resources, collaboration among teachers, or ready access to students. among teachers, or ready access to students. For example, our lower school students currently must travel a great distance to the top floor of an upper school building for certain classes, resulting in the significant loss of instructional time. Working with outdated, energy inefficient HVAC systems, many of our classrooms suffer from poor air quality, poor acoustics, poor climate control, and no access to natural light. Significant portions of our school lack appropriate access for the differently-abled individuals. So to have facilities that facilitate rather than inhibit teaching and learning, we've developed a plan that includes the following. First, new classrooms, science labs, and other educational spaces clustered to provide meaningful adjacencies. For example, science classrooms and labs next to each other, and next to math classrooms, and next to computer science labs to foster sharing of resources and interaction among disciplines and sub-disciplines, especially in STEM areas. Second, improved and relocated classrooms and teacher offices. Third, improved access and connectivity, including a building that effectively links our Annex Building and the Lower School and makes our campus ADA accessible. Fourth, an expanded cafeteria to address 15-minute lunches in crowded conditions. And last, upgrades to an ineffective, energy-efficient mechanical systems. The project will retain a regrettably smaller version of the school's existing turf for physical education classes throughout the day and for athletic practices every afternoon. Our plan seeks to address these facilities deficits in order to improve significantly the educational experience of our current student population and not to increase student enrollment. For this project, we've assembled a first-rate team for design and construction, including architects from Rogers Partner and construction managers from Tishman Construction. And to provide specifics about our design, I'll turn the program over to Marta Sanders.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to walk you through the current proposal. I'll start with a very brief tour around the block showing you the buildings that belong to Trinity and the proposed site for expansion. This is the original building, over 100 years old, that serves currently as the lower school building. It is an individual landmark. Adjacent to that, directly to the east, is the Annex Building, which is formerly belonged to the St. Agnes Parish. It now serves as a shared building for different age levels throughout the campus. The little building here on the left is what's called the Annex Link. It is not original to either building. We're proposing a new connector between that. It will be a glass-enclosed structure. This is the newest of the buildings. This is the middle school building, moving further towards the east of 91st Street. It also is known as the Moses Building. On the, now, over on the corner of Columbus Avenue, we have what's called the Holly Wing. The school occupies the lowest two and three stories of a building which serves as the base of the Trinity House residence. This is a view of the Holly Wing from the north. You see the residence starting on the fourth floor and above, the school occupying the first few levels. And then moving further back towards the west on 92nd Street, this is a view of the single-story structures there with the garage on the left side adjacent to the Trinity House. That is a single story with a level below with a capacity of currently 106 cars by CO. And the cafeteria building directly to the east. On top of that is the existing turf, which serves the school's physical education and recreational functions. It is about 13, 14 feet off the grade now and is enclosed by a 16-foot-high chain-link fence. This is now a planned view showing this campus, which is composed of two-to-four-story buildings. The turf on the north side is the proposed site of the expansion. This is now another view, an axonometric, of this site. The gray buildings are those that are within this zoning lot that belong to the school. The turf shown in green is, again, one story above the current street and is the site of the proposed expansion. This is now a view of the as-of-right proposal, which, as-of-right would, to accommodate this program roughly, we would be allowed to build a five-story addition over the single-story building, which would result in a six-story building on 92nd Street. What we are proposing instead is something that is more contextual, a two-story addition that would result in a building that is three stories tall, roughly level with the brownstones to the west and to the north. This is beneficial to the school in that the bigger floor plates allow for program adjacencies. I'll get into that in more depth in a few minutes. It also allows us, allows the school to retain a turf that is a minimal usable size for their program. The connections between the campus buildings has been a very big focus of this project. As John Allman mentioned, improving the ADA accessibility throughout the campus is a primary goal. Currently, there's one elevator in the middle school which serves that building and the Annex Building with some horizontal adjacencies to the Holly Wing. But for the most part, to travel from the lower school to other buildings, one needs to go down to the ground floor, travel across, and come back up by stairways. So in the proposed addition where, I'm sorry, go back to the as-of-right addition with the six-story building, clearly that building in and of itself, as a tall, slender building, becomes more stair and elevator-dependent, not very efficient for school operations. It also is disconnected from the rest of the campus. So with the installation of that new elevator, we're not improving the conditions in the existing buildings. One of the challenges of the project has been to make the lower school building accessible as an individual landmark. We've studied many options for including an elevator in that building or in the Annex Building, all of which really serve to be detrimental to the historic buildings. We also looked at installing them in the space in between, but we're not able to reveal the side elevations of those historic buildings the way that landmarks prefers, and also it served to block the connection between them. So what we are proposing instead is, again, this two-story addition with the new elevator with, in this, making the connection to the south with what we're calling the Annex Link, which is proposed to be a, a, I'll pick this up, a glass structure in between the two buildings. It allows for stair passage between them, but also for the elevator in the new building to connect over to the north and so that the lower school becomes accessible. And clearly, a campus that operates on four stories and below has more horizontal relationships so that travel times are, become more efficient and the school can operate efficiently. And now I'd like to look at the program. So we're showing in yellow the existing upper school library. The green are the science labs, and the blue are the classrooms. As Mr. Allman mentioned, there is a serious need for classrooms and new labs. The spaces that are have here, there are too few of them, and many are undersized according to the school's programmatic requirements as well as general planning standards. You'll see some classrooms here in the core of the building are old offices that have been adapted to teaching over the years beyond these floors. These are the second and third floors. There are spaces on the first floor in the cellar level that have been appropriated for teaching that are not adequate. They do not receive natural light and are undersized. So in our project, this is the, moving forward, the as-of-right scenario, where we've looked at how to accommodate the program in a five-story addition over the turf. In this, you can see in general that the program is dispersed over many floors. It does not allow for the adjacencies that are beneficial to the operation of the school, just in terms of general efficiency, sharing of materials, but also does not allow for the school to really create the collaborations and the shared environments that they are aiming for, in particular, the STEM Center. With labs distributed over numerous floors, math classrooms not adjacent to those, we're not able to create that essential program area. Also, the existing library remains somewhat disconnected from the other program spaces. And I should note also that many of the labs and classrooms in that are too small to meet the program requirements and other planning standards, including those of the School Construction Authority. In the proposed plan, we're planning, we are proposing to consolidate the academic spaces in the third floor of the new addition. That is beneficial in that the spaces within that addition are grouped so that you can have the relationships between the new science labs with their prep labs directly adjacent and the math lab and the math classrooms, as well as the faculty offices adjacent. The new humanities classrooms are directly adjacent to the existing library. So all of this proves to support the school's program in many ways. The classrooms are also adequately sized. They are around 500 square feet each, which is in line with school construction planning standards of about 25 square foot per student. Labs also are between 800 and 1,000 square feet, which aligns with the code requirement of 50 square foot per student. Classes are intended to serve 16 to 20 students. The turf also a key program element. As it is currently, it's about 30,000 square feet, 126 feet wide, and 250 feet long. It currently allows for the school to hold its physical education program on-site. They typically have three classes at a time out here for a phys ed class. It also allows for sports practices for the various teams, as well as community use. In the as-of-right scenario, on the next slide, please, you'll see that by developing this slender building on the north side of the campus with the relatively, a very small floor plate, once we get to the top, we end up with a outdoor place bait up at the seventh floor level, which is quite disconnected from the other users in the school, becomes a challenge to get the younger students in particular from the lower school building up to that. They would have to go from, say, the third or fourth floor down to the ground floor, cross over, and come up to the seventh floor. It also is insufficient in size. It ends up being about 20% the size of their existing turf and would accommodate basically one phys ed class at a time. The remains, the outdoor space that would be left on the second floor where the current turf is, becomes too narrow to serve those functions adequately. It is in between buildings, so therefore would create problems with ball play, as well as the noise between the academic spaces and the play area. And also, it is with a 60-foot width dimension. It is not adequate for the ball play that is intended. In the proposed plan, with the new turf at the equivalent of the fourth floor level, we end up with a turf that is about 107 feet wide. And with the 30-foot pullback from the adjacent residence, it ends up being around 196 feet long. While this is significantly smaller, it's about 66% the size of the current. At about 20,000 square foot, it is seen as adequate to serve the school's current program, which is, it could accommodate two phys ed classes at a time, as well as many of the sports practices. It does not meet any regulation size, though. It is still, the current one as well is under regulation size, and they do not intend to use this turf for any regulation play, just as they do not currently. Now, this is a view, a rendered view clearly from 92nd Street of the as-of-right addition on the left and the proposed on the right. The as-of-right, again, is, ends up in it with a seven, a six-story building, which ends up around 90 feet tall, that compares with the more contextual proposal that we have for a two-story addition, which ends up roughly aligned with the adjacent brownstones in height.
Just restate your name for the record, Ms. Wagner.
Sure. Elise Wagner, Kramer Levin. As you've seen, the proposed addition does not alter the area subject to the large-scale special permit, the area within 150 feet of Columbus Avenue, which is on the left side of the screen that you're looking at. The special permit states that the 92, that 92 parking spaces are required for Trinity House, the residential building, and that 106 spaces will be provided. The special permit also states that those spaces will be provided off-site in the adjacent garage building, which is at the left of your screen. The garage will remain below the proposed addition, and the 106 spaces will continue to be provided. While the special permit is still in effect, the urban renewal plan has expired. Therefore, no approvals are required under the urban renewal plan. The consent of HPD is required under the Mitchell Lama Regulations, and consent of HPD and HDC are required because they are mortgagers of the garage property. We've been consulting for quite some time with those agencies, and they will, as I said, have to consent to this project. Now let's go to the waivers. So Marta described to you the differences between the as-of-right and the proposed building, and I think that those differences are what, and the fact that the as-of-right does not satisfy the academic needs of Trinity are the reasons why we're asking for these waivers. So let's go over them one by one. Let's start with lot coverage. The existing lot coverage is about 43%. You see that in the orange. And then the as-of-right building, which is the tall, skinny building, has, the total lot coverage becomes 65%. Then in order to achieve the lot, the high lot coverage building that provides the adjacencies and connections that Trinity needs, the lot coverage is 88%, and so that is the first waiver that's required. Then moving to the rear yard, this is the existing rear yard, which is provided above the height of the existing one-story garage and cafeteria building. And then let's move to the as-of-right, which would have the same rear yard, the required 60-foot rear yard equivalent. In the proposed, again, the high lot coverage that's required for the building, the contextual building that Trinity is proposing, provides a rear yard of only 20 feet, and that's the second waiver that's required.
Sorry, could you just go back to that and explain that one more time? These are different dimensions than on the drawing. So what's the 20, the 20 feet?
The 20 feet is the only portion that is, that is not being built upon.
Oh, okay. So it is a 20-foot-deep rear yard equivalent, not 28. That's, the drawing showed 28 in some places.
Okay. We will, we will make sure that the drawings are consistent. Thank you. Let's go on to the third waiver. So the existing Trinity House building received a significant height and setback waiver under the, under the large-scale plan, and that's shown on this slide. And that would not change under the, in the as-of-right scenario. No further waivers would be required. In the proposed plan, as Marta's shown you, and she'll go into a little more detail a little later on, there is a structure above the turf because the current code requires netting and supports for any, any location in the city of New York where there is ball play. So there is this structure with netting and a sunshade, as Marta will describe to you. We have taken the conservative view that that structure might be considered a building under the New York City zoning resolution, and therefore we are requesting a waiver of height and setback for that small area shown in orange. The last waiver is something we're being even more conservative. If you, you can see here that on the, on the right is Trinity House, on the left is that, the netting and supports for the netting. And we're proposing that the netting be within 30 feet of the Trinity House building. The large supports would be 50 feet away. Now, the zoning resolution says the minimum distance between buildings must be 50 feet. So we have 50 feet between Trinity House and the structure, which could be considered a building. We've been extra conservative and said, since we have netting within 30 feet, we want to ask for a waiver of minimum distance between buildings in case the building department would consider that netting, the netting and, and the fence to be a building. So those are the waivers. So let's very, very briefly go over the findings that are required for a variance. As you know, for a nonprofit, there are four findings that are required. For the first finding, in the case of an educational institution, the finding is, has really two parts. First, first of all, the programmatic need of the institution is really the centerpiece of this finding. And I think what we've tried to show you today is that the large floor plates that are are required for this, for this building, which, which, which are in turn what require most of the waivers, are required to satisfy those programmatic needs. In addition, there are practical difficulties here, in terms of the configuration of the existing buildings on the zoning lot, which create practical difficulties in, in complying with the zoning resolution. And I would note, I think, as you've been able to see, that the proposed location of the building is really the only area on the zoning lot where there's sufficient room to expand. The third finding has to do with any effects on the neighborhood. As Marta has explained, the proposed addition is in keeping with the scale and character of 92nd Street in terms of the height of the adjacent townhouses, and it is located within the school's existing footprint. The school has modified its proposal since it first started talking to the community and the community board to minimize effects on Trinity House to the east and the townhouses to the west. And I just want to note that the school has signed a contract to purchase the townhouse to the west on 92nd Street. There'll be no change in the use of that property in the short term. It's not part of this application, but at some time in the future, it would be used by Trinity School for its purposes. The fourth finding is that the practical difficulties have not been created by Trinity. Here, the practical difficulties result from the relationship between the school's programmatic needs, the existing buildings on the zoning lot, and the application of the provisions of the zoning resolution. And the final finding is that the variance is the minimal variance necessary to provide relief. You know, the school has really worked here to make a proposal that, that satisfies its needs without, without doing more than that. They haven't, they haven't added fluff here, they haven't added space that they, they don't need. They really feel that, that, that after the 10 years or so of, of studying their needs, this is, this is their proposal, and it really, they believe it's the minimum in order to satisfy those needs, the academic needs for labs, classrooms, and to preserve the turf at a minimal size. I think that what we'd like to do very briefly now is there have been a lot of conversations between the school and members of the community, and the community board in particular had several concerns when it, when it, when it passed its resolution. And so Marta is just going to briefly go through our response to those concerns.
Please restate your name for the record.
Marta Sanders, Rogers Partners Architects. So, the, the concerns that the community board and the neighbors have expressed to us, we have had many meetings with the neighbors in different configurations, and we've tried to adapt the design to take into account these concerns. They, for the most part, have to do with the relationship of the residents, the, from the fourth floor and above of the Trinity House, to the proposed addition over here, which is, ends up with our third, three-story building. We have, throughout this process, we have re-engineered bulkheads. When we first came to BSA last spring, we had a two-story bulkhead here. We are now down to a single story. That is for the equipment serving this half of the building. It is, we've basically relocated equipment to, inside of other buildings and on top of other buildings on the site to reduce the impact there. We've also re-engineered the eastern bulkhead, so that we've moved that mechanical equipment from the roof into the first floor, actually, the first floor of the garage, and have created some space between the residence and the proposed addition. And you'll note that the ball play enclosure is pulled away. We have the, the clear 30-foot setback from the first fence, the 50-foot to the first structural member, but in general, the entire enclosure is arced over, so that the highest point, which provides about 30-foot clear span in the center portion, follows the arcs of the balls, does not put bulk where it is not needed for the function within, but also reduces the visual impact of this enclosure for the neighbors, both to the east-west, as well as the north. So, zooming in on what's happening here at the fourth floor level of the Trinity House, there is currently, this is an existing plan. This white area is a loja that's about 5,600 square feet. It is open in four directions now, over the existing, into the west, over the existing turf, which is at the second floor level. In our previous proposal, what we took to the community board this summer, we were showing basically some, the impact on the loja, which was to provide the existing mechanical systems in the holly wing with air, as well as the new systems in the 92nd Street addition. So here's the line, right here, between the two buildings. There are, there's a mechanical room currently in the cellar level of the holly wing that needs air to come in and out. This is, so this, this was the most straightforward, efficient plan. So it was our first take, where we just basically pulled those ducts up from the second floor. They currently terminated at the second floor with louvers in the western facade to draw air in. The louvers are currently face over the turf. We were extending those up, and in doing so, taking about 100 square feet for those ducts themselves in that. In the building, the new construction, we had the air intake for the new building through this five-foot-high bulkhead with louvers to the, to the west. So this is a section showing that scenario, again, from the community board, where the loja was blocked with the construction of this five-foot-high bulkhead. The, the bulkhead was below the residential floor level at that point, and we did have the 30-foot setback. So what we're showing today is a modification to that. We've basically re-engineered both the duct work within the new construction, as well as within the holly building, so that we transferred the ducts basically from their current location through the school building. We've given up some school program in the process of that, so that we can maintain the square footage in the loja at 5,200 square feet. So where those ducts were, we now have maintained the loja space. The, and then over on the western side of that property line, we have pushed that duct, that bulkhead flush down into the turf level, where we have a grill flushing set, so that in section, if you click along, you'll see that that is now level with the turf, allows the ducts to come up, make their turns into this building, and ventilate, bring new air in. And in doing so, we're able to maintain about a one-foot-five clear story in the loja.
So just to clarify that, so there's, so now you're going to be using the mechanical system that's, that's existing, or that's located in the holly section. You're going to use that also to ventilate the upper floors? You said the duct work is going from the second floor of holly into the new section.
The, there are separate duct works serving the holly, that's the existing system, so we have ducts coming in and out of there that are now routed through here into this shaft. The existing system is, operates independently, but the vent shaft is basically a, a space that is shared by the duct work from both the old and the new systems.
So you have both exhaust and intake, then, in this shaft?
Right. We have, right, and they're separated, there are code-required clearances that we've maintained. And I should note that any, the air from these machines is spill air from the units, which is basically providing relief into the, from the building to pressurize it. There's no combustion air, there's no boiler exhaust, there's no science lab restroom generator exhaust. That is all located in the western bulkhead, in the code-required clearances from the western property line, as well as above roof levels. So, in response to a request by the community board and the neighbors, we have, we're, we've examined the idea of further removing the school program, so that we can provide a 30-foot clearance at the third floor level. So in doing that, we need to then transfer that vent shaft over to the west further. The red area is illustrating the program that's lofted for this rerouting. So in, in plan, you'll see that on the third floor level, that by shifting that, that duct passage over to the west to allow the 30-foot clear, which would be this area, is really an outdoor space now, we would have to reroute the circulation to maintain the codegress. We would lose a math classroom and a physics lab. The school is gaining two new labs throughout this project in their total number, so losing one of those is, has significant impact, and every classroom, again, is needed, so losing the one classroom is also problematic for the school. The, on the second floor, they lose a significant, about 1,500 square feet of the student lounge. Right now, there really is no student lounge for the upper school, there's a place for them to gather. This is an essential informal program element for the school. And looking more carefully at the, at the rooftop enclosure, we have, the, the current design is basically based on the premise that we want to maintain, that it's midpoint 30-foot clear on the interior, so that they can effectively play ball. That's both in the, in the short direction, in the cross-section, and the long section. That's where the, the high point is. It is, the structure is shaped so that you can accommodate that code requirement, but without building what you don't need at the corners. So basically, arcing it down, so that from the public wayviews, you have minimal impact on sightlines.
Is that a code requirement? Sorry, the 30 feet is a code requirement?
There is no code requirement for it. It's basically a programmatic requirement. It's based on the intended ball play. They'll play field sports, so any lower would really become not usable, and that balls would be ricocheting back too frequently. And so, as we've looked at it, we do need by code to have some, a netting enclosing this. We need to have a 10-foot-high fence, and then a wire netting overhead to keep all the balls in. So what we're proposing is that we, we maintain that netting in for the 20-foot setback zones, both at the north and at the south. And then, in the center portion, which is about two-thirds of the overall floor area, we, again, pulled back from the north-south, as well as the east-west, that we have introduced a translucent fabric membrane. This is, we've included this, so that the school can basically expand the use of this. It allows them to use it on rainy, snowy days, and extremely hot days. In doing this, we've also, we're working very carefully with the engineers to ensure the safety of the school inhabitants, as well as the neighbors. And so, you'll see that the sunshade is mounted on the outside of the steel structure, the netting is mounted on the inside, so any snow or ice that slips off of the sunshade hits the, the netting, and is gathered in this, this gap. There's about a four, four-foot-wide gap between the interior of the parapet wall and that netting. We have drainage there to collect snow and, and bring it in. We're continuing to engineer this. And each of the, the members themselves are designed, not only shaped, to have this economical form, but they're each composed of small structural members that make the truss, so that it is, is light as possible for the economy of the school, but also visibility of, from, without, outside of the school.
Elise Wagner, that, that's the end of our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, there were actually a lot of questions at the review session. Did you go through those?
Well, I think what we tried to do was respond to some of those questions as part of our presentation, and to the extent we haven't, we're happy to answer them now.
Well, I guess we could start off with the issue of the townhouse that's adjacent. So, you said it's not sort of relevant to the project. Why, why is that?
Well, for a number of reasons. One principal, one would be the timeframe. It's under contract, but I believe that there is a three-year period when, at, at least a three-year period when nothing is going to happen. And even beyond that, the school intends to continue to, they'll own the building, but operate it as a, as a rental property, and that this is a, a long-term, would, would, it would be for the long-term use of the school. The owners approached Trinity School and suggested that they were interested in, in selling the property, and Trinity, since it was adjacent, Trinity thought it would be a, a, a long-term goal. But in terms of the, this current project, which they hope to begin construction on next year, this building would, would not be part of that, part of that, that proposal and that project.
Does the building currently have tenants?
Yes, it has residential tenants, and it's a residential building.
Okay, so the idea that it would continue, the tenants are there under lease, and they would stay there throughout the duration of their lease, is that, are they, you know, what?
I think there are, there are a number of tenants, and I can't speak to each tenant, but certainly, there's no intention to, to, to change the current operation of the building for the, in the near future.
Oh, because in order for us to understand better how that fits in, because it affects the minimum variance question, what, what is the projected use of, why would the school decide to buy this, for example?
It's adjacent. I think in the future, the, to the extent there is any plan and concept, it would be used, more likely be used for administrative offices within the existing building. That existing building is a townhouse and would not accommodate the types of labs or classrooms that are contemplated as part of this project, even if it were available within the timeframe of this project.
So the concept of tearing it down and building?
I think at this point, there's no intention of tearing it down.
So with, so assuming then that it's used for administrative offices, perhaps you could discuss, not now necessarily, because I'm sure you have to talk about it with your client, but the, how the administrative offices in that location would alleviate or would respond to programmatic needs that are being taken care of elsewhere in the building, in the existing school and in the proposed school, and how that might change classroom configuration, or, you know?
Right.
I saw that there were some administrative offices that were used for classrooms, you know, that kind of thing.
We'll respond to that. I, I don't think it would have any kind of significant effect at all on the current proposal.
And then, with respect to the large-scale residential development?
Yep.
Because we don't really know what its scope is, it would be very helpful if you could provide a copy of the resolution and the plans, so that we can understand where, what the limits of it are. I understand that it's for height and setback, I guess, for the tower, is that what it was?
Okay, well, it's, it's, it's a complex plan. This is the west side, this is the special permit for, for the west-side large-scale, which covers multiple buildings.
Okay.
It's, it's a very complex special permit, and no changes can be made to it without all of the owners agreeing to do so. So, it's, it's, you may be familiar with this. There, there have been recent zoning amendments where the city planning commission tried to, to, the leader house text, you might, may be familiar with, to allow changes to be made, and this, those were just minimal changes for retail on, on Columbus Avenue. So, it's, it's not a special permit that applies only to this building. And in fact, there are no plans. All there is, is a matrix of showing the amount of floor area on each of the urban renewal sites, and the large-scale sites, and, and whether certain provisions were being waived. So it's a very unusual large-scale, and we will provide you, obviously, with the resolution and, and that matrix, but that's all there is.
Okay, just to understand, because for instance, you talked about the number of required parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Where is that, you know? How do we?
It's in that matrix. We will, we will provide you with that.
And you're going to be maintaining the required number of spaces that were required by a large-scale?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's the idea, so.
The large-scale states that the number of spaces that's required is 92, and that 106 would be provided, and we will, and 106 will continue to be provided for Trinity House. There were, there was a transfer from the R-72 to the C-19. This, this project today is only using air rights from the R-72, and there will be no, there's no transfer with the, with the large-scale area.
But you'll show us what happened, your previous?
It's, it's shown on the, on the plans that are filed for the application.
But the chart or that document that supports the large-scale permit, that actually provides a matrix that shows how much floor area is allocated?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay, that's why that would be helpful.
And we're not, we're not affecting that in terms of what's in the large-scale. We're, we're adding floor area outside the large-scale.
And then, just to get into some of the nitty-gritty issues, the dimensions for the playing field that's proposed, I, I understand that it's somehow viewed as being the right size to handle two outdoor activities, but we haven't been provided with any kind of statistical information. Like, how do you calculate what's the area required for an outdoor activity? And what's the outdoor activity, and how many people get to play in it, and all that stuff? How does that arrive?
I'll let John respond to that question. I'll let John respond to that question.
Oh, John Allman, head of school. The primary way we do is sort of try to see what feels safe for team sports, field sports, in terms of their actual ability to practice on the field. And at a certain point, if it becomes too narrow, it simply wouldn't be feasible to be practicing field sports on the particular field. In addition, it has to do with teachers' experience with, say, three classes of 20, of PE happening simultaneously, and how they need to be spaced to keep the activities from bumping into one another. And in this particular drawing, we feel as if we could get two classes, not three, on that space and have them spaced appropriately. We'll be looking in to see if there is some sort of external physical education or athletic guidelines for some of this. But it's based predominantly on feel for sort of having spent years running classes, running practices on these spaces, and feeling as if what would be safe for students to be able to do, and feeling as if we're at the margins of what would be safe to be able to do, particularly say with field sports on this particular field.
Like, what kind of field sports? What are we talking about?
Our program is soccer, lacrosse. Those are the ones where, you know, again, spreading out, moving around, those would be the two primary ones. It's soccer in the fall. It's lacrosse in the spring. We also use it for track and field, but that didn't have the same sort of issues as lacrosse and soccer.
So, is it going to be divided into regulation-sized fields? Like, you'll have two adjacent soccer fields, or is it just?
They've never been large enough to do that. It's just trying to create enough space so that one can begin to sort of run something that looks similar to what would be true on it. Even the current size is not regulation. So, if you, you might be able to reorient to get one of the dimensions of a regulation field, say the end, if you ran it longways, but it wouldn't go, carry to, it might be a quarter field. And it actually would make more sense just to sort of operate within a smaller space and acknowledge that you're not getting the kind of distribution of space that you'd want, you know, for a regular, a practice field for a lacrosse or soccer or field hockey team.
Yeah, Elise Wagner, I would just say that, you know, the case that we are making here on behalf of Trinity is that the turf is integral to their curriculum, that the academic class, that the, that physical education is obviously an integral part of a student's education. And what they've been able to do here is provide a lot of that on the turf, and that it is critical to them to continue to do that. But it's not playing, you know, regulation soccer games. It's actually providing, you know, instruction to students in physical education. And we can provide you with some information, as John suggested, about how many classes we expect to utilize the turf for how many hours of the day and so on, if that would be helpful.
How many children at a time?
Exactly. We will provide that information.
Right, how many square feet per child?
Yep.
Because the way you're describing it so far is it sounds very touchy-feely, but I'm sure there are many, 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 many schools that have the same kinds of programs, and they've come up with some criteria that determine what's the ideal size for a non-regulation activity.
We'll provide you with that information.
Then, the next question is actually, it would be helpful if we could go to, maybe the plan, the roof plan?
Roof plan.
Yeah. The one that actually shows the netting and the bulkheads and all.
That one, or which one? This one?
The roof plan, the roof plan showing the actual roof?
Sunshade.
That's an, no, 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 the actual roof plan, that's a section.
I think you want to go, no, I think.
Here we are. Then, yeah, propose, there you go.
Yes.
A little smaller than I thought. Okay. So, I, so the question is, if I, if we look at the existing drawings, there is no fire stair and elevator located in the new proposed area. So, there isn't any kind of existing vertical circulation that you're tying into on the 92nd Street side. So, the question is, could you take the vertical circulation that's located, that we're seeing in plan on the roof, and move it to the, into the rear yard equivalent, therefore push the play area back? Or you don't actually have to push the play area back, but put, push the elevated portion, the netting and all of that back? So, maybe some of it is more exposed to the elements, but then you even get more play area, and since your rear yard isn't really doing that much for you, fill up the rear yard with core.
Marta Sanders. So, we would clearly need to study this, you know, more accurately in drawings, but my initial response is twofold. Number one, the vertical circulation, the stairs are located there because they maximize the efficiency on every level. They provide the clearances on the, on the roof level. They are, the northeastern stair is located north of the actual tower building, with the bulkhead is low. It's at five feet high on this eastern part and on the northern parts. So, it is not, it is not directly in the setback areas of the Trinity House. Those stairs are also located where we have current stairs from the first-floor turf down to the street. And in particular, this one here is located so that it maintains the maximum parking in the garage, both on the cellar and first-floor levels. The elevator, as we mentioned, is located over here, so it can provide that connection to the lower school and annex building through the annex link. We were not able to find a location for it in these buildings. It did not impact the interior space, but also the roof lines, and there's not really space in between. So, the question of moving it into the rear yard is one that we could probably provide those connections, but number one, we are trying to not go and, not increase the variance in the rear yard. And also, for the school, this, this space, this narrow space that starts at 20 feet and expands to about 40 feet over on the western side, the piece of outdoor space that's maintained there is actually critical to their program. It is, we, it is now known as the commons. It is directly adjacent to, actually, if you go to a couple slides earlier, we could look at that. Go back here. The commons here, it's about over 8,000 square feet. It is on the second level, so it is directly adjacent to where the youngest students are in the lower school building. This restaurant is programmed to be focused for them. It is going to be a lower school playground. It's directly adjacent to a big multipurpose room, which is also going to serve performance, athletics, play, you know, all different social needs of the school, as well as academic needs. So, the relationship between that green space and then the multipurpose room is critical. Similarly, on the eastern side, it is the upper school lounge, and the academics in this major stair are directly adjacent to this piece, so it's really seen as an extension of those indoor spaces. It, the minimal dimension of 20 feet is required so that we can maintain the existing windows in the north facade of the middle school building, and also include new windows on the southern face of the proposed addition. Maintaining light in existing classrooms that have light and creating new classrooms with natural light is an absolute program requirement for this school, but also in academic design universally. So, maintaining that green space at a minimum is really very important to the school.
So, but just with respect to that, right now, what that is, is it's a one-story building, right? With the turf sits on top of one-story building, so light is actually getting down onto that lower level now. It's going to be in, at the base of a 60-foot-high structure, right?
Well, no, because it's, basically, these buildings to the south arise two, two, three stories higher, but with sloped roofs. And we've actually, this has been a concern for the school. You know, we've been really trying to find that right mix of enough space here, but enough turf space, and then accommodating the bare minimum requirements for the academic floor. So, we actually have mocked it up on-site. We've done extensive solar studies. We've really tested it overall. Yeah, they wouldn't mind it being bigger, but for the most part, it is seen as something that will be functional and beneficial to the school.
Because your studies are showing that it's getting any light at all down there?
It gets some direct light. You know, there are slivers, you know, here and there. They're actually, you know, some of the bigger shadows are created clearly from the Trinity House, but also some bigger residential towers to the east and the south. But it does get quite a bit of light, and we've looked at how to, you know, allow, most of it will be indirect light, but it's still, we expect it to be a pleasant space. It does not want to get smaller for it to remain a pleasant space.
Okay, thank you. So, if you could actually pursue that, we'd like to see what happens if you relocate the core there and try to maintain the 20-foot between the annex building. Maybe it's possible to reconfigure it in a way that retains that 20-foot. And explain if that isn't working programmatically, why it's not working programmatically? Because the idea would be to be able to shift that entire structure further back, right? Okay.
Elise Wagner, yes, we will, as Marta said, the architects have already thought about that a bit since yesterday, and will provide you with a study that shows the impacts on the school.
And then, the next question, which again, is about the sunshade. And I'm not aware of any other sunshades on any other rooftop play areas. So, could you discuss why that's needed, and is there new technology that all of a sudden reveals that sunshades are the new way?
The most important way is, for example, oh, John Allman. The most significant thing is, in the winter months, when there is snow on the turf, we lose the capacity to hold classes or recesses on that space for weeks at a time. And the existence of that shade, that shade to sort of move the snow away from that would give us the capacity to be able to continue to use that as a program space during inclement weather. So, it, even though we're having to reduce the number of classes we can hold on that space, the capacity to be able to increase the amount of time we can use it by being able to use it when it was, when it is raining, or when there's been snow on it, would be a significant benefit to the school.
Are you aware of any other school? Why haven't other schools done that? Curious. Are you aware of anybody else who's done that?
You know, not, you know, I'm relatively new to the city, so.
Well, if you could find that out, because it is an unusual condition. And then, the other question is, if you did have that sunshade, could it be made to be retractable while it's not in use?
Marta Sanders. We have looked at that with our engineers. It's seen as, it's a big piece of material, so in the end, it would end up beefing up the size of the structural members and creating a more bulky structure overall. And I would say the impetus for it, honestly, was that as we really studied what was needed to support the transparent stainless steel mesh, we realized that there was no structural premium for replacing a portion of that with the sunshade to really leverage what was already there. So, when you, as we designed this for the, with the netting, which is common in schools, you see them all over now, and we're often, they're, the, the structure has to be designed to accommodate the accumulation of snow and ice. So, it's, for something that's surprisingly light and transparent, it has this pretty heavy structural burden. So, you know, this is, you know, maybe the 20th iteration of this design where we've reshaped it. We've examined structural members, and we found that there was really no structural burden associated with that sunshade, but there was a huge programmatic benefit. And, you know, we all know that outdoor and, you know, recreation space is at a premium in this city, especially as the number of schoolchildren increases, and that, you know, I don't know if we're the first. I haven't seen others in schools, but I, we might not be the last.
So, this is, this is designed to hold a significant snow load?
It is designed.
We got like 10 inches in one clip last year, so I'm just wondering if that is, is going to be supportive of that kind of a storm situation?
Correct. It is designed for 200 pounds per square foot, per code, and that's based on the opening that's proposed of two, two, a grid of two square, yeah, which holds enough.
So, okay, I mean, we would like to see more about your research in making it retractable. There probably are systems that bunch it up or something, unless, I don't really know what the fabric is. Is it a rigid fabric? Is it plastic? Is it nylon?
It is a Teflon-coated fabric. It is non-flammable, which is a code requirement. It ends up being, it is translucent. There are various levels of translucency, and we'll continue to study those. But it is, it's not, I wouldn't say, you know, a sailcloth or something like that. It needs to be flame-resistant, and it needs to shed the snow and ice, and also just the dirt, you know, any dirt that would accumulate itself, cleaning with this Teflon coating.
But it's a textile that can be gathered, the way it's.
It's more rigid than that. It's more plasticky than that, so I don't think it rolls up. I mean, we've looked at several examples locally and afar. There's one at the UN for this portcage, which is quite relevant in terms of scale and the texture of materials.
Could you provide a copy of that, actually?
Yes, absolutely.
And a little sample of the material would help us understand.
Absolutely, yes.
I just also had a further question about the structure. On my drawing, it seems that I'm, I've sort of got this additional line that looks like it's netting, that sort of encroaches in on that 30-foot line that you've said you're stopping your netting. Let's keep it where it was. There you go. There you go.
Right, so the.
I've got another little line that kind of comes in, and so I'm wondering, have you redesigned so that the structure actually ends at 30 feet? Or are you just saying that it's hopeful that it ends at 30 feet?
No, it is, it is intended to end. If you tell me what drawing it is, I can check.
Yeah, Elise Wagner, perhaps that's a dimension line? Are we, we're sure to clean up the drawing?
No, it's not a dimension line. It looks like it's, it's part of the drape. So, I'm looking at, let's see, which one am I looking at? I'm looking at sheet Z-3.12.
Okay, we'll correct that. There's not intended to be anything within the 30 feet.
Okay.
And then, in terms of that netting, so is that one of those kind of flexible stainless steel nets? Is that what that is? So, your structure is then sort of allowing the netting to like drape on it?
It's actually, it is a stainless steel net. The wires themselves are about 1 millimeter in diameter. The aperture, again, is about 2 inches. It ends up being around 88% transparent. It is relatively taut. It is not completely rigid, nor is it draping. It's pretty heavy, and it is pre-stressed, and the, it actually provides some structural reinforcing to the steel members itself.
Okay. It's not, it's not that flexible netting that you've kind of recorded in?
It is quite flexible when you just have a little sample of it, but in large areas like this, it's, you know, it's more heavy, and it becomes, you know, stressed as it attaches to the members. And we are working with an engineer that specializes in this type, large-span structure, and again, with the goal of creating the most usable space, the minimum exterior, exterior impact, and ensuring safety.
Okay. I have another question for you. Most of the questions are about architecture.
Okay, same question.
So, the next one is, so we noticed that you have floor-to-floor heights on the first and second floor that are 13, 11, which I'm assuming your computer means to be the 14. But the third floor has a 15-foot floor-to-floor height, and it seems as if there's not a lot of difference in program between what goes on the third floor and the second and first, so why is there difference in ceiling height? And all of this is going to, whatever that delta is between the loggia level and the roof of the third floor, seems on, that was the thing, we couldn't tell. Did you provide that information now on these drawings? What is the difference in height between the loggia?
The, it is about 5 feet off from the turf level to the loggia level. The floor-to-floor levels in the Holly building, in the existing building, are around 10 to 11 feet high, which, you know, was, it was built, you know, it does not result in very high ceiling heights. Our new building is doing a couple of things. We're clearly accommodating the interior program that is planned for the different levels, as well as the mechanical systems. We're designing to meet current code, as well as the lead-for-school Silver Rating for fresh air. So, that, that results in very large ducts. These codes, these air, fresh air requirements postdate the construction of that building, and especially when we're looking at a building that's 250 feet long. We have the mechanical rooms located. We have the mechanical rooms located at the two ends, feeding towards the middle, so as you can imagine, the ducts at the extreme ends of the building are very large, leading from the mechanical equipment, and they taper towards the middle. The difference is, the first floor is actually an existing floor-to-floor level, and these are all taken from the mean curb, so the, it actually, there's quite a bit of a slope in that 250-foot length, and it ends up being lower at the west and higher at the east. We're also setting, we're setting our floor levels primarily to accommodate the interior program with the desired ceiling heights. In both levels, we end up with 8-foot-3-high corridors, 9-foot-6-high ceilings, and 10-foot-high performing arts spaces and multipurpose rooms. Programmatically, those rooms would not function well any lower, and clearly, the corridors are really, you know, borderline, we're getting close to code requirements. The upper level is actually taller because the, we need to have a slope for drainage of the turf, so it's basically, there's a crest longitude running lengthwise in the middle, and it slopes towards drains at the north and south. I mean, a very gentle slope, but still, over that length, it makes a difference. We also have to accommodate the clearance for the drains, so it's somewhat typical for buildings, the top floor is higher because you have all the needs for the interior, the internal ductwork distribution, and the coordination of the whole layer of the roof drainage, and all those pipes need to slope as well, so it ends up adding a horizontal layer of space need.
Could you provide just a detailed section, just sort of through one area, to indicate how much is ductwork, level of the hung ceiling, and those other kinds of issues that you've raised, that would account for those different heights? The slope of the roof and so on?
Absolutely.
That's great, thank you. Okay, well, one, I don't know if this is relevant anymore, so, yeah, one question was, for the loggia wall, you're talking about blocking that off now. You're making that a solid wall, right? So I guess part of the question is, is there any way of treating that in a way so that it doesn't appear so enclosed? I mean, that, I think that's part of the objection that we've heard. Is there a way of treating it with glazing to allow light to penetrate? I don't know, landscaping, something?
Right. Well, we're going to continue to wrestle with the actual level, and again, and, you know, really looking at the engineering of all the different ducts that are in there, and if we can push that grill down even another foot, we certainly will. I think at the, on the lot line, where you have the opening between the two occupancies, we at least want to have a safety grill, if not perhaps glass. That's something that we can negotiate with the tenants, but I think there should be something to ensure that the different occupancies don't have a hazardous or problematic security concern.
So there are ducts actually running through that shaft? It's not just a shaft?
Oh, it's full of ducts. It's full of ducts from the existing building and the new building, and they're crossing, and they're bringing fresh air in through very big louvers, and then they're crossing into the buildings to feed air and take air away. It's a pretty complex little moment in the building.
And so in terms of noise caused, how are the ducts going to be insulated? How are their neighbors being protected from the noise of all that mechanical stuff?
Well, the machines themselves are buried in the lower levels of the building, and those will, those machines, the existing ones are basically maintained, and as we reroute the ductwork, we will include acoustic linings, louvers as needed, and we'll be continuing to check the code compliance on the noise at those levels. And then same with the new system, with the newer machinery, we're clearly able to control the noise at the source, as well as in the distribution.
Again, you could include that in, for instance, the statement or in the architect's report. Okay, the other thing just had to do with the support of the, oh, just one last thing on the playing field. Is it going to be lit at night?
We are required to have emergency lighting, and we will, I think we'll get back to you in a response on whether that needs to be on all the time, but the emergency light is intended really just to provide low-level lighting to get an occupant to the egress doors, but nothing more. There's no intention to use the space at night.
Okay. So, but that emergency light might need to be on all the time, or it's on sensor?
I will get back with you on whether it's on a timer or a sensor, or whether, I don't think it needs to be on all night.
And then, with respect to the programmatic needs generally, there was this really great study about adjacencies, but there wasn't a study about the actual need for the classroom sizes, and how many classrooms, and all of that, like how many students there are currently, how that generates need for more classrooms, how you calculate more classrooms, all that stuff.
All right, Elise Wagner, we will provide you with all the empirical basis for what we've been talking about in terms of numbers of classrooms existing and proposed, and the basis for that need. We will provide that in writing.
Okay, and that would be supported by some sort of formal school design criteria that...
Well, yes, and Marta, as she's been mentioning throughout the presentation, has been referring to SCA standards and so on. To the extent those standards exist, we will provide you with as many as we have, absolutely.
And then, in a plan of the site would be helpful, but I can just ask the question while we look for a plan of the site. So can you add to your discussion why a rooftop addition to, say, the middle school or the 91st Street side of the Holly Wing would not be feasible as a way of spreading out the programmatic needs?
Well, for one thing, I don't know that there's any available floor area there, so, I mean, it would be a more significant variance, but we certainly can look at it from a, I don't want to respond from an architectural or other point of view, but...
So the floor area that's on that wing was already transferred to the tower, is that...
That's in the C-19 district, and I believe that there was a transfer from the R-72 to the C-19, so there's no, I don't believe there's any available floor, certainly not any significant amount of floor area there. So it certainly would require much more significant waivers than we are currently requesting.
Okay. If you could give us that information.
Yeah, we will.
That's all my questions. Anybody else have questions?
I just had a couple more questions, and sort of follows what the last question that the chair was asking. I'm just interested to understand the relationship between the new sort of performance, performing arts areas and their relationship to your existing performing arts areas. They don't seem to be connected in the way that your description would tend to lead us to believe.
Daniel, can you go to the program plan, please? The proposed program plan? Oh, there you go. Thank you. Yes, the, so there's a lot of shuffling in this project. By building this new building, we've looked very carefully at what are the most appropriate uses for that new building, how to accommodate the desired adjacencies, as well as the square footages. But we've also looked at how it allows the other buildings to be renovated and expanded. So while you'll see that this third floor is full of upper school academic spaces, by building this, we're able to vacate spaces in the existing buildings to allow for those spaces to be renovated so that you can create new lower school classrooms, for instance, in the annex building, directly adjacent to the lower school. When we, when we move, so with the performing arts, we basically are moving spaces, moving spaces from the annex building here that are dedicated to performing arts now, moving them into this new space so they're more appropriate for those functions, but also we've vacated spaces here to allow lower school academics to expand. There is an existing theater on the third floor level of the annex building, that's the Morse Theater, and similarly, as we've been able to clear out some of the back-of-house here, there's currently a jazz ensemble room that's kind of squished into what was the backstage of that. We're moving them to an appropriately-sized ensemble room in the new building, and then clearing out that space so it can serve as support for that theater as it was originally intended, and will be most beneficial to the school. So we've basically maintained the drama over here, but it moved the music over here.
So is there a, is there a direct connection between your new performing arts classrooms and all of that and the theater, or...
Well, again, the annex link is helpful for that, so that, while the music department is consolidated here, you basically can come across here to, on the annex link at the second floor, or take the elevator up to the third floor and enter that theater. So, you know, we've studied the connections programmatically, the shuffling game extensively, and really landed here, so that these connections, again, with the goal of minimizing travel times, allowing for the main, the biggest, you know, collaborative environment that we possibly can.
Oh, and a second question, I guess, was, you gave us some good information about the noise levels currently on the roof, and I'm just wondering if there's an impact of this structure on noise level. One would hope that it would dampen noise, but sometimes, as we know, when we're in some of an enclosed space, it can actually amplify the noise. So I'm wondering if you've had studies on that, on sort of the amplification or possible amplification?
Right. Elise Wagner, the noise expert from AKRAF who did those studies, first of all, he did them assuming the sunshade, so that's what you have, and he thought it was actually very interesting. He had done some studies without the sunshade. There really wasn't any material difference at all. He said he thought it would actually dampen the noise a little bit, but there isn't really an appreciable difference, and it certainly doesn't make it worse. That was his opinion. And we certainly can provide you something in writing from him to confirm that.
That'd be helpful.
Yes, we will.
Any other comments from here on this slide? Are there speakers on this item?
Madam Chair, I understand that there's elected officials who wish to speak. If you want to hand them, take care of the first.
Yes, please.
Counting member Rosenbaum?
Chairwoman Pearl Mutter and the commissioners for this opportunity to speak before you in reviewing the issues surrounding Trinity School's application for the four waivers from the provision of the zoning resolution. As a new member of the City Council, this is my first time testifying before this commission, but this is not my first time testifying, negotiating, and contemplating Trinity School's longstanding relationship with the Mitchell Lama Building, Trinity House, attached to the school, as well as the school's relationship with the surrounding community, the neighbors. And with that in mind, I truly appreciate the thoughtful questions that you just presented. I understand there was a great in-depth conversation yesterday. The issues, the specific issues that you've raised are the ones, are similar to the ones that the Community Board and I have raised with them, so I just want you to know how much I appreciate that, sitting here today and listening to you. There is no question that the demand for public and private school space on the Upper West Side has grown over the past 10 years in particular. Trinity School chose to respond to that demand by enrolling more students, and now the school is filled to the brim. Their expansion plans seek to remedy their current space issues. This past summer, Community Board 7 did a thorough review of Trinity's proposal as it relates to the five findings. They heard from the school, the Trinity House tenants, the neighboring community, and CB7 voted to disapprove Trinity's application because two of the five findings, requirements C and E, were not met. CB7 suggested that Trinity School, and I'm kind of quoting here, amend its application to eliminate the 30-foot, the 30 feet in width at the third floor level, so as to, which you were just describing, although they recommended pulling it back for the full length of the turf, so as to avoid blocking off the west face, the loggia, and to move the air vents from the loggia, and to remove the covering from the turf. Over the past few months, the school tweaked its proposal, moving in the direction that you talked about today, and moving in the direction proposed by CB7. And while that is very much appreciated, we are not there yet. In my office's discussion with the school, they've agreed to explore, just as they did today, additional ideas that would lessen the impact of the raised turf and the venting system on the west-facing side of Trinity House, thus eliminating the wall that you were just discussing, blocking the loggia. And I really appreciate your probing questions on that as well. It's not clear to me why this wall is necessary. Now, while they've not removed the covering of the turf, they reshaped it to address some of the community concerns, but based on the conversations that I've had and listening today, I believe that additional options will be explored, which may, and hopefully will, reduce the impact on the loggia for Trinity House tenants, and diminish the burden of the turf netting on the nearby residents. Also, while it's not relevant to the BSA findings, it's important to note that Trinity School agreed to a community construction committee and to hold harmless Trinity House residents as it relates to the garage revenue stream and individual parking spaces. I still do have concerns about the school appropriating garage space from Trinity House, and having just now learned about Trinity School, about a variety of new issues, I like the lighting, the nighttime lighting, I would like to see the notion that they won't use the space at night memorialized, their statement today that they won't use the space. I also have just learned about them purchasing the brownstone at the other side of the school, the west, to the west of the school. It's funny, I was at a meeting just yesterday and hadn't heard about it, but that's okay. I look forward to hearing more, and especially hearing, you know, my concern would be about the impact on affordable housing. I look forward to learning more about that. You know, let's see, hang on. In closing, I look forward to hearing back from Trinity School to see the specific steps that it will take to address the concerns of CB7 and the concerns I've raised, particularly regarding finding C and E. And lastly, on a personal note, I really just want to mention that I have worked with Trinity School as a constant, the Trinity School Tenant Association, for almost 10 years. And of course, the parent body and the board of Trinity School fluctuates, but as a constant, I've worked with that tenant association, as they've responded to a number of issues that have been raised by school actions. And I would like to say that the Tenant Association is a remarkable group of smart and steadfast supporters of the city's affordable housing program, and I urge you to review their insightful comments in depth, although, from what I've heard today, you are, so I really appreciate that. I do have testimony, but I'm not going to give it to you today because I tweaked it from what I heard today, so I'll submit that later. Any questions? Thank you. That wasn't as scary as I thought it would be. Thank you. I have a stated meeting, or else I would stay here to listen, but I am going to ask your staff for a copy of the transcript.
Okay. It's also recorded, you know, we can watch it on, you can watch it on YouTube.
As you can watch the stated meeting, which I'm sorry you'll be missing. Thank you very much.
Any other elected officials?
Okay, so is there, just, I guess, people come up, or do we have a list to call?
Well, there's about 20 people on the list.
Okay, so just, oh, is there, yeah, Mr. Butzel?
Mr. Butzel, please. Thank you. Yeah, oh, there, were the people standing there? Just flip them off.
Josh, I'm going to give you...
You can give that to me, Mr. Butzel, it's okay.
These are three copies.
Okay.
Three hard copies, which I was asked to provide. Well, it's a... Well, it's a pleasure to be here. Welcome to the new chair. I represent the Trinity House Tenants Association and four of the brownstones along 92nd Street, 117, 119, 125, and 136. And as you will see, we have a ton of material that we're submitting, written material, that addresses everything from the history of the relationship between the Trinity School and the Trinity House, and the Trinity House Tenants Association, to the specifics of this proposal. And I'm not going to, I'm going to assume that between sessions, you guys will all read all this stuff. I'm not going to go into it in any detail. I just commend you, not only my brilliant statement, but Jim Paul's really incisive analysis of some of the issues that you face here. I will simply summarize our position and point out a few of the key issues that we see. First of all, we all want the loggia opened up. We want the building at the second floor at least moved back 30 feet so that you have light and air and a prospect out of this space. The idea that you have to have a building come within less than 10 feet of the loggia and above it, so you're basically blocking it off, I think hardly can be justified by any programmatic need of Trinity. I think that should be a no-brainer. It should just come. And I also suggest that the proximity of the building to the loggia itself raises an issue under the large-scale development residential plan, because that loggia, it was created as open space for Trinity House because it was not possible to put gardens and lawns around it, which was the usual requirement and characteristic of Mitchell Lama Development. It was, it couldn't be done because the base was going to be used, or was used for a field, though it's not absolutely clear that it was supposed to be used exclusively by Trinity. The school is the field. Indeed, there was a rental provision in the documents that has never been observed whereby Trinity was supposed to pay rent. So that's number one. Number two is to change the bulkheads, either eliminate them, move them to a different end, or reduce them in height and make them transparent, perhaps build them out of glass or heavy glass so that they don't impinge, again, close-in, the loggia. The bubble, or whatever you want to call it, on the roof is a real problem. The sunscreen certainly, because it so significantly increases the visibility of what's going on, and because it is such an unusual thing. You know, I heard this idea that you needed during the winter to keep the snow off, but snow doesn't just come down, snow goes sideways, it blows and everything else. And if you really wanted to use the facility in the winter, you'd get a snow blower and blow it off. And indeed, I have a question about whether you need that enclosure at all. The only reason that you need the enclosure is because there's going to be ball-playing there, and the size of the netting is determined by the size of the ball. So if lacrosse is played, you have to have these two inches sort of squares, but if it were limited to something like soccer, it would be a much more transparent, a much lighter facility. But do you need it at all? Trinity has operated, as it says, it does gym, it does gym classes, physical education classes, all sorts of things that are athletic and consistent with the curriculum that it says it wants to do. It's physical education, it isn't just competitive sports take place in Randall's Island and other places like that. It isn't really needed. You could use this, Trinity could use it to meet most of its needs without having to play ball. That's not the current position of my clients, but I think it's something that you should consider because it would solve a lot of the problems that are involved here. Fourthly, we don't want anything done with the garage. Now, the garage, notwithstanding the applicant's position, Ms. Wagner's position, is a part of the urban, Mitchell Lama Urban Development Project. It's very clear, and Mr. Paul will give you the documentation, that the garage is the Trinity Garage. It was leased by Trinity School for 99 years to the project to be used as their parking facility. And what is being proposed will be a major modification of that garage. In fact, I believe it underlies the entire project, because the support columns that are proposed to be built in the garage are going to modify its configuration, reduce the parking spaces, and that constitutes a modification of the large-scale residential plan and special permit. They're all of one, they always were all of one, and you'll see the documentation that says it. So I believe, and we believe, that the school is going to have to deal with the large-scale plan and take it to the City Planning Commission before it can proceed with this project, before it can even build the two stories.
I just have a question about that. If the parking count is 109 and they're retaining 109, then...
Well, I think it's 106. Big difference, whatever.
106, sorry. If they're retaining that, then I don't understand what the concern is.
Well, the concern is, it'll depend exactly on what the large-scale plan and the permit shows. But it is the property of Trinity House. It's not the property of Trinity School. And so you can't just appropriate someone's property and go ahead and build big columns in it. Now, to answer your question, we have been shown a drawing in which the parking spaces are so closed together and include parking on the ramp of the facility itself, that apparently it comes to 106 spaces. But we don't know whether that's a legal parking layout. We suspect it's not, and we hope you'll look into that. But I don't think it rests on just the question of how many parking spaces. It rests on the question of who is in, who owns, who has the effective right to use that We want restrictions on the roof, if there is, whether there's a bubble or not, that limit noise, limit hours, limit lighting, all that sort of thing. We'd like to see some cleanup of other areas that are presently in sort of nuisance situations for the community. Those are identified in our submissions, and so I'll just leave it at that. I've identified the legal issues, and again, I'd say this one is particularly significant. But I also think that these impingements on the loggia, and I don't know now whether the plan is to remove the balconies or not, but the balconies are part of Trinity House. And if they're being removed, they're removing something that is clearly subject to the large-scale development plan. So that's another factor. I won't spend much time addressing the five criteria. I just want to say three things, or maybe two, but it's safer to say I'll say three. First of all, at least with respect to the loggia, it's absolutely clear that the board could not make the C finding insofar as it results in a significant impairment of the appropriate use or development of a neighboring property. It's perfectly apparent, or at least it is to me, that the western loggia will be rendered all but useless for a use for which it was planned in order to provide recreation space if the loggia, if the building isn't pulled back significantly from where it is. And the second thing I want to say is, programmatic need is a very general and apparently flexible idea or criteria. When you're in the private sector, you just use reasonable return, which is subject to some usual regular kinds of measures. But programmatic impact is considerably different. And what I say here, and I think you could hear it from some of the explanations that were given this morning, is for Trinity in this case, programmatic impact changes into programmatic wishes. This is what the school wants. This is what it would prefer. I mean, we heard towards the very end that part of the facility will be used so that they can renovate the older part of the building. We heard that they've acquired a new brownstone, which might be used as substitute space. We see they wanted a field that no other school has with a sunscreen that no one else in the city seems to have. Those can't, you can't self-define programmatic interests. It's your job, since the court seemed to have given you the term, to look at what's really necessary, where it conflicts with other, the interests of others, and hold the school to make the distinction between what really is essential and what is simply a wish to make things more comfortable. For a school which I have a high respect for, is not a public school, is filled up with upwardly mobile, relatively wealthy, you know, and kids who are going to have a great life because of the advantages of this school, but there is an affordable housing project next door which deserves to be maintained so that other people, poorer people, can have a great life. Thank you.
Next speaker? Are we with three minutes time limit? Yeah. Okay. We have three minutes. You state your name for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Yes, my name is Jim Paul, and I'm the co-chair of the Trinity House Tenants Association. Trinity House is a 200-unit Mitchell Lama Building. Heard about it, it's located right next door to this project. And I would say that we depend on the board for a just outcome in this matter, which is the latest episode in a long history of difficulties we've had with Trinity School. We've submitted extensive comments, and I'll not try to review those here, but I did want to say that in terms of what Al was just talking about, that the impact, the whole issue of changing things that are covered by the large-scale plan, there are 5,200 square feet of new rooms that are being built by the school down into the garage, and that is a major change and a major impact. I also want to emphasize that the proposal contains many errors, omissions, and we think misrepresentations.
Oh, okay.
And this has made it very difficult for us to respond and to analyze this thing. And Ms. Wagner's comments today about addition to existing facilities, no, this is not an addition to Trinity School's additional facilities, this is a separate, this is the Mitchell Lama building that is being impacted here, it is not part of the school's campus. I want to conclude by saying that I believe this dispute is not a zero-sum game between tenants and Trinity School, or Trinity School and the neighborhood. I think that community-friendly alterations to this building plan are possible, and we look forward to continuing discussions with that to create what I believe can be a better building, not only for the neighborhood, but for Trinity School itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Burke?
John.
John Burke.
Sorry.
Burke, sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Durco. I'm the treasurer of 125 West 92nd Street, which is one of the block six brownstones immediately across the street from the site. I want to thank Al quickly for the presentation that he's done. He is representing our brownstone as well as Trinity House. We have three other brownstones that have signed on. If you quickly switch to page four, I'm just going to go through the pictures, but I urge you all to have a look at this in detail. This is the current view from the rooftop of the brownstones, okay? You know, as you can imagine, it's characterized right now by quite lovely outdoor space. Those are the landmark buildings over to the right. You can see Trinity House to the left there with its loggia, okay? From the clock tower to the left is the area over the parking garage, okay? So with respect to the decisions that are needed from HPD and this board and other organizations mentioned, the ability to build, in particular, this obnoxious sports cage and sunscreen that will vastly change the character of this, will have significant impact to the rooftop terraces and upper floors of all of those blocks of brownstones. Clearly, it seems there was enough impact to the brownstone now at 134 that Trinity has found the best idea is to purchase that, okay? Next is the only rendering so far, computer rendering, that Trinity has provided of the, what this proposed site will look like, okay? It's not very useful from this particular angle to see how this sports cage, industrial dance hall, whatever it is, is going to look from, and how it's going to change the character from areas like the loggia or like the rooftops of the brownstones immediately across the street. We are requesting that Trinity provide those, okay? In the absence of that, I've provided a rough sketch, okay? I don't claim to be an artist, I'm an engineer and a few other things, okay? The key thing here is this two-inch opening in the mesh. That is engineered, as I understand it, to stop one type of ball, a lacrosse ball, okay? How many of your thousand students are on your lacrosse team, okay? Because right now, we're engineering for that. All right. If you pull it down, as far as errors in the environmental report, this is section C1, the shadow study, okay? The non-hashed section is the section that requires study, although I don't know who designed this, certainly not a human factors engineer. So as that's pointing to the north, the sun being south will cast shadows. That's PS 333 in the Lucy Wick's playground right there. Why it was omitted from the shadow study, I have no idea. It's not mentioned at all.
If you could wrap up really quickly, you have two minutes.
Okay, if you would quickly go to page seven, just a couple of very important things here, okay? This request for the 20-foot setback, okay, is interestfully countered by a desire to increase the width of this, of the courtyard internally, okay? So they are widening this courtyard and asking for the space back from the public, okay? So, you know, as I see it, they're robbing the public here to increase the size of this public courtyard. Then, most importantly, down at the bottom here, you've seen this very art structure, looks to me like a quonset hut, okay? Imagine hail, snow, ice blown by blizzards or northeasters, and tell me that that's going to immediately take a 90-degree turn when it reaches the end of that structure and fall within a three-foot parapet. As an engineer and a FAA-licensed flight instructor, I know a little bit about ice on metal structures, this is a really bad idea, okay? And for the rest, I'm available if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. It's not in any particular order, it's first come, first served. The opposition is the first.
My name is Judy Jacobson. I've lived in Trinity House for 36 years. So I've gone through a lot of dealings with both parties. With respect to the turf and its alleged programmatic need, which I don't really understand because the school has three gyms, three other outdoor spaces, two pools, an outdoor garden, and Central Park and Riverside Park nearby, which most other schools use as well. I object to losing four balconies on the loggia. With respect to the garage, if you go into the garage, there are numbered spaces on both levels, there are two levels, and I looked at all of them, and they go from 1 to 106. So if there are going to be mechanicals put in the garage, the pillars enlarged, how can there still be 106? I don't understand that. So that's a big issue, that garage, with respect to ownership and downsizing. So that's a big issue, that garage, with respect to ownership and downsizing. The school says that light and air is very important, what about the same for the neighbors? On both 91st, 92nd, and 93rd, because there are apartment buildings, large tall apartment buildings on 93rd whose windows face this area of construction. And with respect to having discussions with the neighbors, there are very large apartment buildings on 91st Street facing the school, none of those tenants were invited to discussions or informed about any of this construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I oppose it.
Thank you. Next speaker. Are there any other speakers? Yes. You should sign in, well, you could, but you could state your name and we'll put it into the...
You're telling your opinion, opposition first and then...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, just... All right. Just the only person, another person that's signed in is Michael Grossman. Three minutes.
My name is Michael Grossman, I'm the owner of 119 West 92nd Street, which faces the new construction. I owned the building since 1980, when it was taken over by the city and lotteryed to qualified builders in the community. I was fortunate enough to be selected. I also come with another hat, I also have a 32-year career in education behind me, dealing with administration and teaching in physical education. So let me just deal with that first. As an educator, I can say to you, I think you're on the wrong track. What you've essentially done is taken a nice, open yard with a fence around it with a view of the sky, and you're placing your children in a cage, essentially an aviary, where they can run around protected on all sides by a rather thin mesh. And on top of that, putting a sunscreen only adds to the enclosure. As far as the construction itself is concerned, when we bought the houses, we could have, we actually had a view of the Empire State Building from the second floors of our brownstones. As construction developed, not only from Trinity, but buildings beyond, we lost most of that. With Trinity, we gained a nice bell tower, we had views of the old buildings, and now we're going to be, we're going to have in our face a box, a grim box, looking straight into our buildings with the proposed cage on top. They speak of contextual, I'd like to know in context with what, other than the color, perhaps, it's really not contextual with anything. If you wanted to make that structure contextual, maybe you would extend the corners along the top, put rusticated elements on the stone, perhaps some arches, to make it contextual with the adjacent and facing brownstones. Just a word about the sun shade, first of all, that's a misnomer, by their own description, it's really a snow shade, and an ill-conceived one. They should keep in mind that their problem may be heat, not snow. By elevating the yard, now they're up higher, less shadow cover for the yard, more wind exposure, and this mesh with the sunscreen will keep heat in. The turf itself is heat-retentive, so if, I don't know what they can do to ameliorate that, but in terms of the snow, to expand on Learned Council's comment, last sentence, if they will, if they really wanted to get rid of snow, they would put heating elements into the surface, below the surface, back it up with a Zamboni, they could have a clear yard except when there's a blizzard. So I think we're being led down a garden path. Thank you.
Next speaker, actually, anyone who hasn't signed in who wants to speak is welcome to speak, you just have to state your name for the record. Next speaker, please. Please state your name again for the record, and you'll have three minutes, please respect the three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Emily Mandelstam. I'm a Trinity parent and a lifelong Upper West Sider. I'm also president of the Board of Trustees at Trinity School. Good morning. As you heard from our head of school, Trinity needs facilities that facilitate. We don't have those now. We're teaching reading to distractible six-year-olds in hallways. We're providing writing assistance to struggling high school kids next to loud, clanking clothes dryers. We're facing shortages in science labs, and we have classrooms that disabled members of our community can't get to because we lack elevators. The project that Trinity has submitted to the BSA will address these and other serious programmatic deficits. As you heard, our proposal results from careful analysis and planning done over many years. Since 2005, the last nine years, Trinity has gone through two master planning exercises, one strategic planning process, and one outside evaluation by the statewide accrediting agency that routinely assesses independent schools. That outside agency is the New York State Association of Independent Schools, known as NICEACE. And here, I'd like to respond to Mr. Butzel's comment that our proposal is about want and not need. The report issued in 2012 by the NICEACE Visiting Committee that did an extensive evaluation of Trinity summed up Trinity's needs bluntly. The NICEACE Visiting Committee gave Trinity a failing score in the category entitled, "Resources to Support the Educational Program." On a scale of 1 to 6, with 6 being the best and representing, quote, "criteria fully and completely met," and 1 being the worst and representing, quote, "criteria not met in any respect," Trinity received a score of 2, really the worst score. A 2 represents, quote, "criteria not met in significant respects." I'd like to read you just a brief excerpt from the NICEACE report. Quote, "The school has recognized the need for expansion and renovation in its recent strategic plan as it strives to meet current and future needs and continues to execute its mission effectively down the road. The Visiting Committee recommends that the school continue to pursue its goal for expansion and renovation of facilities as identified in the strategic plan. In pursuit of the expansion, the school should initiate a comprehensive review of space allocation and use, including educational, administrative support, athletics, and storage spaces," unquote. Trinity embraced the findings of the 2012 NICEACE report. We established a steering committee to oversee a possible expansion and renovation, and as board president, I charge the architects, engineers, and others on the steering committee with examining every possible solution to Trinity's facilities' needs. That led the committee to explore options including building underground, occupying a nearby site, and thus establishing a satellite campus, and building an as-of-right structure on our existing campus. Because none of the options that we explored enabled us to meet our pressing programmatic needs, which we need before the BSA today. We are seeking those new variances out of need. And again, I must emphasize that the plans we have submitted represent the most minimal expansion practicable to meet our programmatic needs. In other words, the plans have no fat and no frills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Betty Chen. I'm a parent of a Trinity student, and I'm also an architect and urban planner and a former New York City Planning Commissioner. I'm here to testify in support of the project's planning rationale and how it grows directly out of the programmatic needs of the school. This large-scale, comprehensive renovation project would allow the school to rationalize years of incremental ad hoc growth. The design reorganizes existing spaces within the existing bulk to recapture new program area. It optimizes the space Trinity already occupies so that any new expansion could be as minimal as necessary. Mr. Allman spoke from the point of view of an educator about the need to create meaningful program adjacencies. As an architect, I'd like to confirm why meaningful adjacencies lead to a more compact and efficient design than an as-of-right scheme would be. The architects grouped classrooms by use and academic subject, lined them up along common minimum room dimensions. They utilized double-loaded corridors, regular geometries, and tight core layouts. The number of new classrooms and the amount of space allotted to individual classrooms is in line with industry standards and is not excessive. General-use classrooms are approximately 520 square feet, and science labs are approximately 900 square feet. These room sizes are entirely in keeping with standards outlined by the New York City Building Code, the New York State Education Department, and the New York City Department of Education. Planning the new bulk to be low and wide rather than tall and narrow means shorter travel distances and less duplication of support spaces. The resulting design occupies the smallest footprint with no excess space. There is much less bulk overall in the proposed design than in an as-of-right layout. You've heard the reasons for proposing rebuilding the existing turf on-site. Think about how this avoids the consequences of the alternative. Having a functional turf on-site means Trinity can avoid transporting students off-site throughout the day, which means less school bus traffic impact to the neighbors. The proposed design is functional in a way that the as-of-right could not be. The as-of-right envelope would necessitate cutting the existing turf in two, part of it remaining down low, part of it elevated five stories higher. For sports and recess, the impact of a functional yard being split into two narrow or non-adjacent spaces is not only inefficient, it would be unworkable. You have to be able to throw or kick a ball in all directions, not just back and forth in one direction. Speaking now as a parent, I see firsthand that Trinity has reached a moment of reckoning. It is a long-lived institution which enjoys a wonderful academic reputation. However, Trinity wants to keep serving future generations of children. The physical conditions of the historic buildings and the as-of-right zoning are truly stifling real programmatic, mission-critical needs. I hope you will find Trinity's requested waivers are reasonable and appropriate. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
My name is Jessica Bagby. Thank you for your time and consideration today. I'm the upper school principal at Trinity School and the assistant head of school charged with oversight of the academic program. The school and the upper school division are sorely in need of the enhancements promised by this facility's plan. I can promise you that this undertaking is absolutely not a vanity project. Nothing about it is pretentious or extravagant, except perhaps the cost, but this is New York City. As Betty Chen noted, the plan is in keeping with best practices in school design in the 21st century, not the 20th century or the 19th century, when many of our buildings were constructed. Even though our students and our academic program are recognized as among the best in the country, our facility does not serve our students and teachers well. They succeed in spite of the physical plant and with significant costs in terms of human factors. In too many respects, our facility simply does not compare favorably to our peer schools, public or private, and their facilities here in New York City or in the rest of the country. This building project and renovation will allow us to do something as basic as provide natural light in classrooms. The current upper school facility is a cinder block fortress in which a child can pass eight to 12 hours a day without seeing daylight or knowing what the weather is outside. Further, to improve air quality and to heat and cool the current facility properly, not to mention the new addition, renovation is necessary to access and replace the old HVAC system. We do not have enough classrooms of appropriate size to run our current program. A number of teaching spaces are converted offices, and a number of offices are converted storage rooms. Unlike our peer schools, major student support programs are in our basement, from our class deans and college counselors to our learning center for our most academically vulnerable kids. The inhabitants of the basement battle chlorine smells and humidity from the pool and the constant swishing, whirring, and tumbling of washers and dryers from the athletic department laundry room. A new facility would move children, adults, and educational program out of this environment. A new facility would move, additionally, unlike our peer schools, we cannot adequately accommodate our upper school students in our dining room. All upper school students cannot be seated in our dining room at lunch, in our library, in our computer lab, or our common space. Unlike our peer schools, we cannot offer every advising group in the upper school an adequate and reasonably private meeting space because we do not have the rooms. Further, unlike our peer schools, we do not have enough classrooms to offer the curriculum that we want and need to offer with an array of courses our students deserve the opportunity to take across departments, but especially in advanced science and computer science. Simply put, our facility does not facilitate a 21st-century education or allow for curricular growth or innovation. Our athletic director and performing arts directors will speak to the challenges students, teachers, and coaches face in spaces they currently use that were not designed to facilitate critical programmatic needs in the arts and athletics. Thank you very much.
Pat Krieger, Director of Athletics and Physical Education, here to speak about the turf. The turf field is an integral and unique part of Trinity. It is a heavily-used facility that supports many of Trinity's formal and informal educational programs. The obvious curricular impact on the physical education and fitness program is the turf is our classroom, it is our teaching space. With daily phys ed classes for grades K through 8, the turf allows students, children, to step outside into the fresh air and gain valuable movement skills and exercise with their peers. We have 12 40-minute classes during the school day, obviously operating concurrently, with some classes with 60 students in them. Socially, the entire school, K through 12, plus parents and alums, use the turf for relaxation, recess, and an outdoor space for students to gather. But the biggest impact of the Trinity turf is that this amazing city space supports a rich athletic program consisting of 55 teams in 22 sports, with many of our athletic practices occurring on this rooftop practice field. Between the junior high and high school levels, six soccer teams, six track and field teams, six lacrosse teams, three baseball teams, and two softball teams conduct their daily practices using this field space. Over 300 high school students and over 100 middle school students play on Trinity teams and use the turf. If the turf field were to further shrink in size, the smaller space would cease to be a safe practice field for our athletic teams. Simply put, Trinity team practices could not be held on our own field. Practicing on our own field allows students to participate on a Trinity team and get home with sufficient time to enjoy their family life and manage their academic workload. So programmatically speaking, yes, we can have our students clear these chairs and throw lacrosse balls against these walls. The impact of not having a significant practice space, there will be an impact on the city facilities as Trinity will request more public spaces to use. The Trinity turf, from my perspective, literally is the foundation for our athletes, our teams, our students, and our community. Thanks for your time.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Adrianne Barr, and I am the president of the Parents Association at Trinity School. It's nearly a full-time volunteer job, but it's been my privilege to work with so many amazing and generous parents, students, teachers, and staff. In addition to my own kids, my son graduated in 2011, and my daughter is now in the ninth grade at the school, I am the liaison for almost 1,000 students and their parents and the school's administration. In my 17 years as a Trinity parent, I have discovered that Trinity is not just one of the best schools in the city, but it's also a community of kind, concerned, and very active families. And many of those people are Upper West Siders. Over 2,000 of the children, parents, faculty, and staff in our community live within the boundaries of Community Board 7, and any construction will affect and benefit not only our school, but it will also affect and benefit those of us who are Upper West Side neighbors. Many of us are already deeply involved in this community, and my own kids, as part of this Trinity School's strong commitment to community service, have spent tons of their free time with other Trinity kids cleaning up Riverside Park, tutoring and reading with children at PS 84, and playing bingo once a month with senior citizens in our dining room. Our lower school students have run canned food collections, and they work with Jump Start, an organization that advocates for the city's immigrant children. Our middle schoolers have done canned food collections for the Yorkville Common Pantry and St. Timothy's Preschool. And our upper schoolers hold annual blood drives and volunteer at the Star Learning Center in East Harlem's tutorial program. One aspect of the planned renovation will allow us to expand our performing arts spaces. And as the mother of two very talented hams who play piano, sing, and... And as the mother of two very talented hams who play piano, sing, and act, this news makes me personally happy and will allow us to expand our programs that have allowed my kids and hundreds of other Trinity students to perform not only for their peers, but for local seniors living in nursing homes, and to act in plays and musicals that many people in the neighborhood regularly attend. Every year, our Parents Association runs a huge holiday fair that provides food, entertainment, and a cornucopia of crafts, gently-used toys, sports equipment, and books, and has become a popular place for our school families and people in our neighborhood to shop. And every Thanksgiving, we host a free dinner for local seniors. Kids from every division of the school help by baking cookies, creating homemade placemats and goodie bags, and serving neighbors who might otherwise be alone on Thanksgiving. The school also lends space to a variety of Westside community groups who hold rehearsals, meetings, and practices at Trinity, including the Goddard Riverside Community Center, PS 84, the Riverside Orchestra, Westside Soccer, Fast Break Kids, and Docks. Enhancing our facilities will allow these and other groups to take greater advantage of our space.
You can wrap up quickly.
Sure. Over 350 residents, including myself, are also members of Trinity's Swim Club. This pool is a haven for seniors and couples, and the school provides low-cost admission for the pool. And I have to tell you that I have met many of my neighbors through this club. They've served as role models for me, and we have shared stories of love and loss, of battling cancer and injuries, and we've invited each other to our book openings and our weddings and our christenings. The Swim Club is just one of the many reflections of Trinity's long partnership and participation on the West Side, and I hope you will allow us to continue to do so in a greater way. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Fenn, and I'm a student at Trinity School. This year, I'm in the 11th grade, which means that I will be here for the two years that Trinity is going through renovation but won't be here to directly benefit from it. Yet, having personally experienced the facilities of Trinity, I can confidently make the statement that the needs are real and immediate. So I couldn't be more hopeful for the changes that will positively affect the students to come, on the field, in the classrooms, and in the school. On the field, students will be able to benefit from the newer turf. I am on the track team at school, and because the turf now is not specifically designated to sports practice like the newer turf will be, we're not able to practice on it every day. Instead, the track team resorts to running up and down the stairs of Trinity and practice baton passing in the hallways outside the science classrooms. Or we take the two-hour back-and-forth trip to the armory every Tuesday, in which case I often get home at 9:00 PM. The sunshade will also be very important during the winter. Last winter, we were not able to practice on the turf because it was covered in snow. Thus, we ran in Central Park, which was incredibly icy, and where more than one student actually slipped on the ice. On the academic side, we will finally be able to have many courses that students would like to take but that Trinity could not have offered in the past simply due to a lack of classrooms. In fact, I know of a class that takes place in a teacher's office. This year, two of my classes are in the basement, where there is not a single window. So as you can see, I'm very excited for the renovation to take place. I truly think that Trinity needs to keep pace with the changing times so that it can inspire a generation of students who will be better able to give back to this neighborhood and to New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. This woman's been waiting for a while.
Good afternoon, and thank you for listening to me. Maybe I'm not as prolific as everyone else, but I'll say what I'm going to say. My name is Carla German, and I'm a 36-year resident of Trinity House. I've lived in Manhattan all my life, and I've lived on the Upper West Side for this last 36 years. And I'm also a member of the Trinity House Tenants Association Steering Committee. During my tenancy, we've had a number of struggles with Trinity House, with Trinity School, going back into the, I believe it was the late 80s or the early 90s, when they wanted to appropriate the fourth-floor loggia space so that they could expand for more administrative rooms, because they had overgrown the size of the classrooms that they had. They had about 300 students at that time, and they were moving up towards 500. Okay, now they've gone past 600, which is what they said they needed then, and now we hear today that they're up to about 1,000 students. When will this end? The school, because they did not win that time around, they ended up opening up, what is it? It's not the Holley, but it's the Moses Building, I believe it is. They ended up opening that building to accommodate the additional students, the additional classroom space that they needed. Now they need additional classroom space because they've gone up to 1,000 students. They're claiming, and I don't take anything against Trinity, because Trinity is doing a very good job, their kids are very well taught, much like we would like children in public school to be taught, but it takes a lot of effort. And just because they have 1,000 students, when will they stop? Will it be 1,500 students in the next five years? What are we going to be expected to give up then? Part of the Trinity House building, they already occupy 39 of the apartments in the building, how much more do they need? What they want to do is to increase because they keep over-enrolling. When will it stop? They're trying to teach their kids that you have to be concerned about your neighbors and the environment and everything else, but what about the neighbors that they have right in Trinity House? When do they pay attention to what we need? That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ed Boland, Vice President for External Affairs at Prep for Prep. I've been with a nonprofit for about 13 years. Prep for Prep's mission is to develop leaders of color who will change the face of leadership in our country. We identify New York City's most able students of color, most of them in the public school system, and prepare them for success at over 50 independent schools. They go on to graduate from the best colleges in the country, and they're becoming leaders in every field of endeavor you can imagine. 35 years ago, Trinity was the school that enabled Prep to open its doors by offering the classrooms where we prepare our students to excel academically. They also offered administrative space to Prep for Prep. It's fair to say that every member of the 4,500-plus members of the Prep for Prep community have used and benefited from Trinity classrooms and facilities. It is also the school that enrolls more of our students once they finish the academic preparation than any other in the city. Prep for Prep and Trinity have created 200 astonishing alumni. Among them, we count a Rhodes Scholar, the CEO of a charter school network, a professor of surgery at an Ivy League medical school, a partner at a leading law firm, a policy fellow with the U.S. State Department, and an aerospace engineer, to name just a few. This is what Prep and Trinity have created together. Certainly, the proposed renovations will benefit the 40-plus students who attend Trinity each year, but they will also benefit the hundreds of students who use the facilities after schools, on weekends, in the summer. I think of our students who've done five hours of homework the night before, taken two-hour bus rides, have seven academic subjects. I would like to give them the opportunity to actually recreate underneath the sunshade instead of 90-degree weather on the turf. Additionally, we'd be thrilled to have four specific improvements in particular. The language labs will be a great benefit to our students. The improved science labs will as well. Prep for Prep will finally have true offices, not storage closets, as we've been occupying for the last 35 years. And finally, toilets that are sized for middle school students rather than kindergartners. You can imagine the indignation of a middle school student who has to use a kindergarten toilet, but that's a small issue. The renovation will also provide better facilities to the thousands, let me emphasize thousands, of aspiring Prep students and families who pass through the school's door each year to learn about the program and to take our admissions test. We literally could not operate and operate the program without that space and for those aspiring families. Let me conclude with this. A better facility for Trinity is a better facility for the entire Prep for Prep community and ultimately, New York City. These improvements will enhance the experience of the diverse young leaders we are working so hard to foster. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Christine Neely, lower school science teacher at Trinity School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The plans for our new building will have a substantial programmatic impact. It will enable upper school science students to take more advanced placement courses and electives within the science department. These additional course offerings are designed to suit a range of abilities and interests. In order to do this, dedicated space within the science department is sorely needed. With the creation of these science labs, the children will be able to pursue their passions without being confined by the constraints of scheduling. Often, Trinity science courses teach science with a service component, if not at its core. For the last 25 years, Trinity lower school students have taken a field trip to Dead Horse Bay, Brooklyn, in which we seine for fish and also perform a beach cleanup, in which over one ton, over one ton of plastic trash has been removed from that beach. Similarly, in the upper school, students working on the Urban Barcode Project have designed consumer advocacy projects in which they hold restaurants and food service organizations accountable to truth and labeling. Programs such as these require sufficient time and space in order to properly implement them. As a native New Yorker who grew up in a rent-stabilized apartment complex, I can say to you with the utmost sincerity and honesty that with this design, Trinity is merely trying to provide the academic opportunities that its students deserve and crave.
Good afternoon. First of all, I am one of the last of three more speakers for Trinity, so there is light at the end of the tunnel. My name is Todd Phillips, and I am a member of the Steering Committee for the Trinity School project. I have worked in New York City construction industry for over 30 years and have worked on several projects where the local schools have needed to renovate and modernize their buildings. I live on West 89th Street and have two college-age children who have graduated from Trinity after attending kindergarten through 12th grade. My family has been part of the Trinity community for 16 years. While my children received excellent educations at the school, they both had the experience of taking classes in the basement of the building where the teachers had to compete with the noise from the mechanical equipment rooms which were servicing the building. The Steering Committee, over the past few years, has focused on interviewing and hiring some of the best architectural, engineering, project management, and construction firms in New York City. Our focus has been on determining what the school needs physically and programmatically, and nothing beyond that. Budget is a key concern in a construction market that is greatly inflated over the past few years. We are very focused on ensuring this project moves forward and is completed with a minimal impact as possible to our students and to our neighbors. On the academic side, the Steering Committee is looking at how the school will keep over 900 students, teachers, and administration functioning on a daily basis. Since we will be dealing with everyday need to keep an ongoing institution functioning, our primary concerns involve the safety aspects of construction, noise created, the containment of dust and dirt, and the logistics needed to complete the project on schedule. Our concern for the school is equal to our concern for our surrounding community. Trinity has and will continue to reach out to our community in order to address any issues as they arise. We will have noise and vibration monitors at the site on a daily basis. We will engage an independent site safety company to monitor the actions of an extremely experienced and skilled construction team. We will establish a hotline for the neighborhood, which will immediately address any issues as they arise during the project. We have made these commitments known to our neighbors and to our public officials with whom we will work closely throughout this process. It is not lost on the Steering Committee that we will have to coexist with our surrounding community long after this project has been successfully completed. We have constantly asked ourselves how our design will impact the greater community as we strive to achieve longstanding academic needs. My family will not experience the benefits of this new building, and I am not being compensated in any way for the time that I have dedicated to this project. I am here today because the administration and the faculty of this school care so much for the children under their care, for the families of the children, and for how they can make the Upper West Side better. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ray Allen. I'm a parent at Trinity School and also a member of the Board of Trustees. I have two boys in grades five and seven at Trinity. As a physician, I can say that the modest expansion project to increase lab space for the science curriculum will have a profound impact on student learning. Lab facilities are instrumental to learning and understanding science. The improvements made during the renovation will dramatically improve the experiences of my children and all children who attend Trinity. Well, not a strict focus of this hearing, I think it's important for the Commissioners to understand better what Trinity is about and what it strives to do, both as a school and as a member of its community. As a member of the Diversity Committee at Trinity, I see firsthand the school's community involvement. Trinity School devotes significant resources towards increasing the diversity of the student body. The current student body is over 35% students of color, and much attention is paid towards increasing economic diversity as well. In addition to ongoing efforts to admit a diverse population of students, community outreach is also a focus. The school hosts several events throughout the year, which Adrienne mentioned. For instance, for example, the fair, the entire student body volunteers to host a Thanksgiving dinner for local senior citizens, and various grades have partnered with local public schools to promote literacy. My personal interest, as it relates to this project, understandably, is largely dedicated to the modest but important increases that are planned for the science, STEM, and lab spaces, so that Trinity might help to produce more doctors and scientists for New York City. And while the additional laboratory space will directly benefit Trinity students, because Trinity is also a partner to so many groups locally, the improved facility as a whole, which is already shared on numerous fronts with our neighbors, will surely be a positive addition to the Upper West Side.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Sefale. I'm the Director of Performing Arts at Trinity, and I will be the last speaker, I am told. So it's good news for everyone. I'm here to speak about programmatic necessities in performing arts. My specific job is to supervise program and faculty for both theater and music grades K through 12. And earlier, I believe it was Commissioner Hinkson who brought up some questions about the performing arts spaces. I think it's important, as you review the plans, to note the current music spaces. I won't address theater spaces because we are not adding theater spaces, but the current music spaces. And I want to point out to you something that has not come up yet, that in fact, these spaces were, none of the three, chorus, orchestra, or jazz band, were ever designed to be music spaces. They are, in fact, borrowed spaces. They are borrowed classrooms. So my argument is, we currently don't have dedicated music spaces that are properly sized for the types of ensembles we offer. And addressing the idea of luxury, perhaps, in the performing arts, because some of the rooms are seen big, it's very important to understand some of the numbers we're dealing with. For example, our current fifth and sixth-grade orchestra is 52 students. The room they attempt to rehearse in is about 540 square feet. So what happens is, for matters of safety and other concerns, because you have people with instruments and bows, we rehearse them in shifts. This is not conducive to developing a music program. Next year, we will face the same issue with the fifth and sixth-grade band, when they cross from 30 to about 50, 52 kids. They will also need to rehearse in shifts, not as an ensemble. We have similar issues with our choral program, where one of our high school classes, actually choral classes, has moved out of the chorus room and can only rehearse in the chapel when time permits, and sometimes we get bumped for speakers and so forth, because the class is 48 people, there's 48 people enrolled in the class, and the room that they're in is approximately 400 square feet. So these are really necessary improvements to offering the type of classes that I enjoyed, maybe some of you enjoyed. For me, it was in the 1970s, maybe later for you guys, but these are basic types of band, orchestra, choral classes, classroom music classes that many of us enjoyed as kids in public schools. I'm a product of the public schools, I'm very proud of that. And we're just trying to bring the facilities at Trinity up to that level. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Yes, there's one.
My name is Anthony Cerigliano. I'm a Trinity tenant for 38 years. I've seen a lot of changes on this area. I don't know if you're aware of, but there's a construction going on right now across the street from our building, on the corner of Columbus between 92nd and 93rd Streets, that's been going on for about two years. If you approve this construction, we will have two constructions going on at the same time in this little area. time in this little area of 92nd Street, basically, which will be a lot of air pollution, noise pollution. Also, if you do approve this construction, the garage will be closed. Now, I am a senior citizen, retired senior citizen on a fixed income. If my car is in this garage right now, if it's being closed, I have to move my car to another garage, being inconvenienced. Also, I'm understanding that the garage generates $600,000 a year to Trinity. Now, if they lose this money, where is this going to come from? Are they going to raise our rents? We have 200 units in this building, which becomes to $3,000 each or $250 more on rent if they have to make up that $600,000. Couple of years ago, two, three years ago, they gave us the energy surcharge for the whole building, which was crazy. But now, if they take away the garage, I mean, there's a lot of us that have cars in the garage, senior citizens, we have to be inconvenienced to go to another garage, and it's going to be a lot of pollution, more pollution in the air with the other construction right there on the corner that's been going on for about two years. Now, my terrace is right over the field, and this view is going to be derogatory to what I see every day. You know, I see that the brownstones across the street have the same problem with their, if this construction comes to pass, and I firmly am against this, any construction taking place on this school property.
Thank you.
Elise Wagner. We will respond in writing to all of the questions that have been raised. I just want to actually respond only to the last gentleman's comments to make it clear. And I believe that the council member mentioned this. Trinity has already committed to making the Trinity House whole in terms of any costs associated with this construction. So to the extent there is, during the construction period, the money that now flows from the garage to Trinity House, Trinity School has already committed to pay for that amount. In terms of relocation, relocation of parking spaces, Trinity School will identify garages within 1,000 feet and will pay in advance for the additional cost to any individual tenant of going to another garage, so there will not be any impacts as a result of the construction.
Okay. And just in when you respond, if you could respond to the parking layout, because we don't actually see the parking count on these plans, just shows the lines but not the count, how you achieve the 106 spaces?
Yes.
And I just had a question that actually, I don't know if it was raised specifically in the testimony, that the grill that's located above the air shaft, whether the mechanical equipment or the mechanical ducts could be sort of gathered down so that maybe the grill is dropped to the level of the loggia? I, you know, if you could look at that?
We will certainly look at that.
Marta Sanders. We will certainly look at that in the next iteration of our proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, could you also just give us a little bit more detail on the relationship between the new structure and the well, the mechanical well? And some of the tenants have mentioned their terraces. Could you perhaps give us some detail on what the relationship is with all of sort of Trinity stuff with the private terraces, as sort of, I guess, as well as the loggia? It's not really clear what they're actually talking about.
Okay, we'll provide more of a detail. And obviously, our plan showing just a well where the vents are was extremely misleading since there is, as Marta describes, a tangle of vents in there, and we didn't think we could properly represent it on drawings of the scale, but we will provide you with more detail.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, so, how much time do you need to get together? Kind of a long response.
Sure, but I think we could do that within three weeks from today.
Okay. So if you could submit on the 28th for next hearing on the 18th, is that okay?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Bucksel?
Opposition.
Oh, yes, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So.
Submit October 28th.
You submit October 28th, and opposition submits on, wherever it is, the 12th of November?
Okay.
Okay? Sorry? The 12th of November?
Yeah.
Okay, for a hearing on the 25th. Oh, and then you get a response to their response?
Yes, I think that's, so we would respond a week, what, usually, I think, a week later?
A week later, so you'd respond on the 18th?
Right, and then a hearing?
And then a hearing, then we need a little time to review. So a hearing on December 9th?
December 9th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could do November, but you think you need the, you want?
It's just that then there's only a kind of a week to review everything, and that's not really enough time, so.
December 9th would be the next possible time?
December 9th would be better. So, right, so you'll submit the 28th. Opposition submits the 12th. You submit the 18th, and then the hearing on the 9th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and for your testimony. And we're going to take a break, a 30-minute break. We're going to take a 30-minute break. We'll resume at, hmm, 2 something. 2 something. 2 something.
2:10.
2:10. Hi, Al, how are you? You're on the record still? Mics off? Mics off? Yes, we're taking lunch. Thank you.